Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Sorry for the delay. We're having some technical difficulties, but hopefully we're up, we're going, and we'll stay up and going for the evening. With that, I'll call the Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024 meeting to order, and I will ask the city clerk to establish a quorum.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Landr?
Here.
And Mayor Wixson?
Here. Thank you. With that, I'll ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. And with that, I've had a member of the audience ask to lead us in the pledge this evening.
Do all please stand. Henry Hart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation unto God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I don't know.
I believe the flag is on the wrong side, but it probably didn't invalidate the salute.
We just found that out when we turned the wrong way. Thank you.
Is there any wrong way?
With that, we'll move into our reports, and Mr. Newmeyer, any closed session reports?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. No closed session items to report tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Newmeyer. With that, we will move to councilmember reports and announcements. I'm going to lead off, if you don't mind. Lot going on the last few weeks, starting Thursday, the 11th, where I attended the State of the County, sponsored by San Luis Obispo County. I attended with fellow councilmembers, some city staff, advisory board members, and community members. On the 14th, on, or excuse me, on the 12th, on Friday, I was invited to attend a major deed dedication at the Morro Bay High School. And then that evening, we participated, all five of us actually, in shops, not together, shop sip and stroll down in the merchants' area on Morro Bay Boulevard. It was wonderful, great event. On the 14th, I had an invitation and got to, just towards the end of opening day at the Yacht Club, beautiful day out on the bay, and then attended the Blessing of the Fleet. On the 16th, I attended as a liaison the Planning Commission meeting, in which the discussion was on housing, followed up Wednesday on the Chambers Breakfast on the Bay, in which the conversation continued regarding housing. On the 19th, on Friday, I attended the mayor's lunch in Arroyo Grande, where we received a legislative update from Assemblywoman Addis. And on the 21st, on last Sunday, Councilmember Ford and I were both there, and we attended a peaceful dedication at the Centennial Stairway. Had the opportunity to attend two different listening sessions from two of the council members. I appreciate being able to sit in on those and listen to community members and share their input and visions and concerns. And I had the great privilege this last weekend of remarrying a couple that I've gotten to know that are visitors of Morro Bay, out on the bay. They'd asked me as mayor to do that. That was their 25th wedding renewal, and it was absolutely gorgeous out. It was beautiful out, beautiful day. Huge thank you. I think all of us will probably address that or recognize Fitness Works for their efforts this past weekend in conjunction with Earth Day to do a massive cleanup on Quintana and the ditch. It looks great. There's still work to be done, but kudos to all of them and the community members who spearheaded that and took that on. I see a roll-off dumpster packed to the brim. I hope everybody will get out this weekend and enjoy the kite festival, and then we're following that up with the week, following weekend with the car show. And lastly, I will be holding office hours on Saturday, May 11th, at the Community Center from 9:00 to 11:00, and I encourage anyone who has something they want to share or discuss to stop by during those two hours, and I'll be in the small conference room there. Thank you. And with that, I'll go to my right, Councilmember Barton.
Well, goodness gracious, that was quite an assortment of events and celebrations, and how nice that you could be with your friends on the bay. So, I was, I traveled north this weekend to visit one of my sons. He's been having some medical issues, and so I went to visit him. And I was blown away by just how packed the bay area is and how crazy the traffic is. And so I was very, very happy to get back to Morro Bay yesterday and to a much, much quieter, easier-going place. So, anyway, that's it.
I, let's see, I, oh, instead of going to the State of the County, I went to a tour of Vistra's Moss Landing. I was invited to do that with some, a diverse group, actually, and some advisory board members and different members of the community. And that was really interesting. I saw the different types of battery storage, the ones inside the buildings as well as the ones in containers. And Vistra had their, the area fire chief come and speak to us, and we could ask questions. It's, I laughed thinking that it's difficult to compare. My takeaway, I guess, at that moment was it's difficult. I didn't get any information, I mean, I got broad information as far as the financial, the benefit to Morro Bay. I don't, I don't, I'm very visual, and I haven't seen that on paper. But the, the location where that, that plant is, is very different than our area in Morro Bay. It's, it's in an area that's pretty much remote. There's an operating existing power plant there, and there's no tourism. There are very few, if any, houses, and there's no school. So, that was my takeaway. I mean, otherwise, they, they were pretty convincing that their technology is, is, you know, that they've worked out a lot of kinks. But that was my takeaway. And then I held a town hall on Saturday, and I had a great turnout. I was out of town the, the week prior, and I forgot to send out email reminders, but I had, I still had 45 people attend, and it was, it's just great because each one, I have new people that I haven't seen come, and I get to meet new people in the community. And they, they're all so receptive and so grateful that, you know, that I'm doing this, and they, they really seem to appreciate the time to, you know, be heard. I set, let's see, my, my subject was on your vision for Morro Bay, and I started out by reading, you know, saying, saying a few things, and then reading Morro Bay's vision statement from the city's general plan, or Plan Morro Bay document. Everyone that commented really seemed to resonate with that. They really liked the, what, what that says and wanted to preserve that. It kind of, there were a lot of people there, and it makes sense when you're talking about the vision of Morro Bay, that were there, talking about their concerns about a battery storage plant in Morro Bay as well as offshore wind. They, that didn't seem like it was very favorable. I received comments that it's a priority to maintain the health of the environment, that they, you know, people would like to prioritize all the animals, big and small, that we are, have in our, in our area, and lots of, lots of health promotion in general, like for people, too. They, there was, there were comments that Morro Bay should be a health Mecca. They, there was a recommendation to use the city property for affordable senior and family housing. They, was, people had a desire to enhance our fishing industry. There was a comment for diagonal parking on Morro Bay Boulevard. Many people said no tall buildings downtown. Lots of stories about California beach cities that have, that are now unrecognizable and not attractive to visit, and they didn't want that to happen in, in Morro Bay. And then there was a desire to have a visitor center in Morro Bay. And that's, let's see, yeah, that's, that's all I have to report. I guess the only other thing would be, in addition to what the mayor said about the upcoming events, that I would like everyone to remember that the Ironman on, on May 19th is, is, the Ironman triathlon is upcoming. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. On Sunday, April 14th, I held, I believe, my third listening session. This one was for North Morro Bay, from San De Santo to Highway 41. And some of the topics that the neighborhood got into was speeding and the need to have a slowing down in the areas of Ironwood, Greenwood, Laurel at Avalon, Hill Street at Mimosa, quite a few cross intersections there in a area in the neighborhood. Some other suggestions were striping signage, meaning no, you know, stop signs, everything from yield striping in various intersections. Another thing that came up was just cleanliness, and that really hit me. It was the idea of, you know, after rains, after years, you get a lot of buildup of sediment and all kinds of things in drainage areas and along areas that don't have, you know, curbs and sidewalks. And so there was this idea of possibly having kind of a drainage area cleanout, and then corresponding that maintenance possibly with the street sweeper. So that was one idea that came. And something that was very interesting and important to note, at least for me, in terms of delivering information on behalf of the city, was that a lot of them actually do look at the things in their water bill. So I felt that that was, you know, a, a great thing to kind of get a confirmation on, that, you know, those papers don't just get thrown away, that people actually, you know, take a look, look at them and, and really do read them. So I have a couple ideas on how to address some of the low-hanging fruit that the neighborhood mentioned to me, and I'm looking forward to having that conversation with staff and the city manager. Number two here with me is I actually got to witness the cleanup in the Quintana Creek area, from about Burger King area all the way to Couch Potato. I, I, I was not one of the people who was able to walk the area when Chief Watkins went there and did the drone footage of the creek bed there. And there is nothing like actually being down in it. And the amount of encampments, I, I, I think I was in probably three, at least three of them at certain points. And it, it was incredible, the amount of stuff. Everything from hundreds and hundreds of batteries, cans of food, clothing, like really wet clothing and carpets and things that you just couldn't pick up by yourself. It was incredible. Tarps, just things, everyday needs that people have, and it just really grabbed me. I was completely reclammed over seeing, seeing that effort being made that day by community members getting together. I want to give a shout out to Ginger at Fitness Works, who helped the property owner, Mark, Mr. Mark Hoffman, get this crew out there. These were members of our community volunteering their time to clean out that creek. And this was, to me, the most neighborly, neighborly thing I have ever seen in this community in terms of, you know, outside of some of the other amazing things that we have, you know, planting flowers, all kinds of groups that we have in this community. But this was something different, getting down and dirty, and so that we could drive by that area and now not see, you know, some of that material that I think was, you know, not, not always the good reminder of something, right? But for me personally, it was a better, a more important reminder that we've just begun this journey together as a community. And part of that, I think, healing process is that cleanup phase, right? And, and then from there, it goes on to, how are we going to keep up this effort? You know, I oftentimes get asked about, what is the plan? And I think the, the key thing was, is the plan was to get people out of the creek, and now the plan is to work with our county and regional partners to try to figure the rest of this out. So I just wanted to say thank you. You know who you are, and it was incredible.
All right. Wow, that's, there's a lot covered there. I, I, I'll keep it short because really, I mean, I feel like so much has been said already about the amazing events that have happened over the last few weeks. I would like to add that I attended the Public Works Advisory Board and the CFAC, the joint meeting that they had together regarding the capital project, their prioritization list, and just receiving input so they can create their recommendation to bring back to council. So it was a really great meeting to hear the feedback that was presented by each of the volunteers that serve on those boards. Again, I just really appreciate our advisory boards and all the hours that are spent diving into these items that are presented to them. And they, you know, they volunteer their time to, to do this, and I just really, really, truly appreciate it and look forward to that coming back to council. And I will, I'll just leave it there. All right, thank you.
Mayor, could I, I forgot something really quick. I wanted to also announce, well, first of all, tomorrow night at Delmar Elementary is a, a Vistra meeting. And I don't, is it, can you help me with the time? Six to eight, six to eight. I wanted to announce that for anyone that's interested. And then also on May 7th, May 11th, sorry, Saturday, May 11th, from 2:00 to 4:00, one of our community members, Jean Marie Colby, will be holding her second in a series of, of workshops to, to learn how to respond to the draft EIR, and that will be held on May 11th again, 2:00 to 4:00 at the library. That's all.
Thank you. With that, City Manager Kimball?
Thank you, Mayor. From staff level, I have just a couple things, and then I'll, I will give my time to Chief McQueen and followed by Public Works. And for me, I attended a Cal Poly Economic Development Committee meeting last week, and that meeting was focused on two issues. One is workforce development and housing. The other one is regarding offshore wind in, in our, in our region. And clearly, offshore wind has been determined by many folks as the future economic driver in our region. I know that this is just, I'm reporting out. And the other thing is that I, we have updated our city website with a process chart that issued by Bone, and I thought that was informational, and I was hoping to put it here, but the presentation's not working. But we, we post on a website, and it's, it has four steps. So right now, we're under the, the leasing part. And so I, if someone, if folks is interested, check it out, under city website, under offshore wind page. And the other thing I thought was exciting was that many of the city staff members visited the, the Morro Elementary School site. We were able to, the school board opened it up for us to go in. We were able to see how elegant that, that, that the building is. With just this couple things with this, I'm going to let Chief McQueen speak on the safety report regarding the battery project.
Thank you, City Manager Kimball, Mayor, City Council. So a while back, the Morro Bay Fire Department put out a request for proposals for a consulting firm to assist us with the safety evaluation for the Vistra project. As a result of that RFP, the Morro Bay Fire Department contracted with a firm known as DNV Energy, and they'll be providing that safety consulting on the fire and life safety aspects of the project. DNV Energy is a worldwide leader in energy consulting in multiple areas of energy production and storage. They provide consulting for testing, certification, and technical advisory for multiple energy systems, including batteries. They look at renewable energy, oil and gas. They also provide consulting for maritime safety, pipelines, offshore structures, and electric grids. They have 39, or excuse me, they have offices on every continent, including 75 different countries and 39 offices in the United States. The firm also runs an independent battery safety testing laboratory in the Netherlands, where they can test fire propagation, measure the gas composition, test system behaviors based on different scenarios. And they, these tests can be done to validate the manufacturer's claims about the safety of their products, and they can test different protection features under real conditions in these labs. DNV Energy is currently working with New York State Energy Research and Development on multiple projects, and has been a partner with them for years. They do multiple projects, including safety consulting on energy storage projects. They do accident investigation. They, I also spoke to multiple references at NY Certa and received positive endorsements on their contract with DNV, and said that they have partnered with them for future projects as well. So they've been delivering high-quality product. They continuously spoke about the exceptional level of services and that they were impressed with their services that they received on multiple projects. On March 20th, 2024, we received the off-site consequences analysis that was provided by the Vistra team. DNV Energy was provided a copy of this analysis, as well as the draft EIR to review. Since then, we've been meeting bi-weekly to discuss the documents, and last week, we were able to set up a meeting with the consultants from DNV Energy and representatives from Ramble, that were the consultants that drafted the off-site consequence analysis for Vistra. And they were able to talk to the people that did the technical work on it, ask very specific questions regarding the data, the conditions, the different scenarios that they evaluated, and a lot of the technical data that was presented in the report. DNV Energy is reviewing, and they're preparing an opinion on the data contained in the off-site consequences analysis. I expect that it'll take about three to four more weeks for them to go through all of the data, confirm the different numbers and the different scenarios that they reviewed, and then present a report back to us. Once that's done, then I would like to look at hosting a community forum where we can review the data, review the information we receive back from our consultant, and provide a little more clarity to the public on this. So, that's the end of my report.
I, while we're on the battery project, I think I wanted to let the interim director, Michael Cauldron, to, to remind the public of some important meetings coming up.
Thank you, City Manager Kimball. Yeah, I'd like to highlight that the public will have an opportunity to make verbal comments on the draft EIR for the best project at the next Planning Commission meeting. So no decisions will be made at this meeting, but on May 7th, in this room at 6:00 PM, begins the Planning Commission meeting, and it's the only item on the agenda. So we'll be taking public comments. The EIR consultants will be there, the Vistra team will be there. And though comments won't be responded to in the moment, the purpose of taking comments is to make sure that those responses are included in the final EIR. So this is a part, a normal part of the EIR process, but it's an extra step to have a, a public venue to take comments from the public. And so we wanted to offer that. The next night, May 8th, there is, the city is hosting a workshop on the power plant master plan. So as you know, the city's general plan requires before any development happens on the power plant property that a master plan has to be approved. And the master plan looks at a range of issues. Maybe most important, as specified in, in the general plan policy, are the transportation issues in terms of additional connectivity for the north part of the Embarcadero. So we're going to be having a workshop that'll be in this room, 6:00 PM, on Wednesday, May 8th. And we'll have different stations set up that will cover the different areas of the power plant property. There's five areas that are identified in the master plan as, as distinct. And each station will have information and the ability for people to provide input on what their thoughts are about future development or preservation for open space, or whatever kind of input they might want to provide during that workshop. So, thank you.
Mayor, my last staff report is from Public Works.
Hi, good afternoon, City Council and members of the public. Thank you very much for the opportunity to inform the public and the community of special recognition and also an upcoming event that we're having this Saturday. So on the agenda under 7G, we have a yearly proclamation for the city to support Arbor Day and also for the city to desire to continue to be a member of Tree City USA. So this will be the 27th year that the city has been a member of this fantastic thing, the Tree City USA. And the agenda and the proclamation were actually put in purpose for today's agenda because we have a special event that's coming up this Saturday. So Morro Bay in Bloom and the city of Morro Bay, we've been partnering for the special event that is being called I Love Morro Bay. And part of the seven activities, family activities that are planned for this Saturday between 8:30 and 11:00 at City Park, one of those events is to plant some trees along Quintana Road. And so we have some beautiful strawberry madrones that are waiting at the corporation yard to be placed on their permanent new homes at Quintana Road and beautify that street. And the community is welcome to join us in planting those trees. To get more information about the event or to sign up, people can look at morrobayinbloom.org, and all the information is there for that. So just wanted to thank, again, the City Council for the opportunity to do that plug-in.
Thank you, Carlos. I think it's going to be a great event this weekend.
And you can come, I'll be in the art area with all the kids. So come see me. I'll probably be covered in paint. But anyway, I'm looking forward to it, Carlos. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will move on to presentation, and I will turn it over to Chief McCray.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'm going to ask the crew to bring up some equipment here. We had a short video prepared, but due to the technical difficulties, we're going to adapt and do a very brief in-person demonstration with the equipment that we have here. So in December of 2023, the Morro Bay Fire Department was awarded $48,000 from the California Office of Traffic Safety, and this was part of a grant to reduce the amount of lives lost in traffic incidents in California. Morro Bay Fire Department received this funding to purchase some outdated, or to replace some outdated auto extrication tools. These are sometimes referred to as the jaws of life. And the tools that we were able to replace them with are a little bit lighter, they're faster, they're designed to cut the new high tensile strength steels in modern automotive, and they're also battery-powered. They can be used underwater, they can be used in the rain, and they can be used in enclosed spaces because they don't require a gasoline-powered generator with hoses, and it doesn't produce carbon monoxide in a building. So we could use them if there was a building collapse or something like that as well. These new tools are just much safer, they're easier to deploy. Based on our small staffing numbers, one person can deploy these on their own. It doesn't take two or three people to move all of the equipment. So what we'll do is I'll just hold up each of the tools and just talk about what they do, and then we'll move on from there. So the first thing we received was some rubber airbags. So these airbags are a lifting device, and they use one of the bottles from our breathing apparatus, and the air pressure in that is enough to lift a, like a 18-wheel vehicle up off of somebody. So they'll lift anywhere, depending on the size of the bag, from eight inches up to like 36 inches. And again, they're strong enough to lift a vehicle or even a big rig, and you can stack them on top of each other to go to different heights. They're incredibly durable. As you can see, they're pretty lightweight. It's just incredible tool to rapidly remove somebody out from under something. The next item that we have is a cutting tool, and this is designed to cut like the doors off of a vehicle, cut heavy pieces of steel. They cut really rapidly, and if you want to operate it, you can show just how quiet they go. Nah, technical difficulty. Apparently, tonight's a night of that. Yeah, there. So, as you can see, they're pretty quiet. They don't require the gasoline engine, which They don't require the gasoline engine, which cuts down that chaos on scene with the noise. This tool that Kevin's demonstrating is a spreading tool, and it's allow us to spread doors or dashboards off of people, to move heavy stones or boulders in a building collapse, and allow us to free, free somebody. The last tool that we have is a hydraulic ram, and it's just a spreading device. It will allow us, you could put hooks on it and pull things together, or you could put it into a doorway or something, and the ram extends and has incredible spreading force. So... Yeah. So they go a little bit slow just for safety, but you can see they're fairly lightweight compared to the older tools we have, a lot quieter because they don't have that gasoline engine, and just allows us to do that work faster and safer. That's good job. We'll open this one all the way up so you can see how far we're able to spread with these things.
That's the ton rating?
Yeah.
What's the ton rating?
The ton rating? I'd have to look at the specifications.
Yeah, they're somewhere in the like 50,000 to 60,000 pounds.
Yeah. So, pretty impressive set of tools. It just makes it faster and easier for us to get somebody out of a vehicle that's trapped. The less time that it takes for us to get them out, the greater chance for survival that they have. We would just really like to thank the California Office of Traffic Safety for providing the funding for these much-needed tools, and grateful to have them in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief McCray. Thank you to the staff and to, I see the fire marshals here, and also Tracy was here somewhere from your office. There she is. Thank you all for coming tonight and sharing that. They are heavy, I will attest to that, definitely. Lighter weight than when I used to be there. With that, we'll move to public comment. I do have some speaker slips. I will call on first, and after that, general public comment will be open to the rest of the audience. First up is Rachel Wilson, followed by Linda Winters, followed by Jean Marie Colby.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council and staff members. I have a question for you. How could a lithium BES fire anywhere else on Earth affect Morro Bay? Not a fire in Morro Bay, but anywhere else on Earth. There are three words. Perception is reality. San Francisco's reputation is poor right now because visitors do not feel that it is safe to visit. That's Forbes Magazine. Perception is reality. In 2023, tourism in San Francisco fell by 19.6%, almost 20%. In New York, it went up by 7.5%. And in Chicago, it went up by 6.5%. In San Francisco, it fell 20% when it should have gone up 6% to 7%. So in reality, they lost 26%. In Morro Bay, tourism, we have about 800,000 tourists a year for $161 million to our local businesses. So if you multiply that 161 million by 25%, that's reality, what San Francisco lost because they didn't grow like their neighbors. That's over $40 million to our businesses. Tourism taxes, according to Morro Bay's report, generated in 2022 over $11 million. Knockout 26% because the public no longer perceives Morro Bay as a safe place to visit. That's over $3 million. $43 million, and we haven't even had a fire in Morro Bay. That is the power of perception. That is what is hitting San Francisco right now. So by building a BES plant, can Morro Bay afford the loss in perception as Morro Bay as being a safe, small fishing harbor to visit? Because it affects us like it does San Francisco, it would be worth about $43 million lost per year. Again, think about it. You only go places where the perception is that it is safe. Perception is reality. Thank you.
Darn Chief McCray, did you have to send the guys away? It's good seating company. Hi. My name is Linda Winters. Greetings to the council, staff, and the chiefs. I live in the same mobile home park as I have for the past 30 years, and I'd like to talk tonight about kudos. Where should I begin? Oh yes, right here, last night for the Monday night dinner, the Monday night community dinner for 77 people. Yay to all those volunteers. And how about Sunday afternoon, April 20th, over 21st, excuse me, over at the community center with our own councilwoman, Zara Landrum, and a lot of very vocal and concerned citizens discussing their visions for Morro Bay. Safe to say that the consensus was to keep it as it is, the way we all love it right now. Yay to Zara and her mom. How about Saturday, April 20th? I just learned who the wonderful group was that cleaned up the creek and the encampments right there on Quintana and Highway 1 South on ramp. Yay to that whole group, including the Morro Bay PD. Now, let me step back a few more days, three more days to be exact. Last week at the Wednesday, April 17th, 5:30, CFAC, and, which is the Citizens Financial Advisory Commission, and PWEB, the Public Works Advisory Commission, I don't like that alphabet soup whatsoever, met here to discuss 45 some different projects slated for work repairs to our beautiful city. Only 45. That doesn't include the day-to-day jobs that all those public work crews have to do, just like the one that the fire and the police department have to call every single day. They have to answer all of those calls. Kudos to the entire Public Works Department. They are the heart and soul of our city's infrastructure. As I see it, Public Works is the busiest department that we have. Grossly overworked and understaffed, how many of you have heard that particular phrase lately? I have a few requests and wishes for the citizens of Morro Bay. If you do not know how this city operates, come to all these meetings. Take an active part. Listen, read, speak up. Kudos to the Public Works Department and to the, to the staff for all your efforts, all the way up to Greg Qualick. I understand he's not feeling well right now. Thank you for all that you do for Morro Bay and for me too. I certainly have asked many a favor from you. Thus ends my little speech. Happy Earth Day to our beautiful little city, quiet, wonderful city. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, staff. I'm Jean Marie Colby, and I wanted to talk a little bit about the environmental review because I'm immersed in it right now. And I was struggling to, to read it and comprehend it, and I found a little trick was to look, to look for that search bar, the little three dots on the upper right-hand corner where I could look for a term. The term that I was looking for manually, I had read about before, when I got here and I started hearing about the proposed BES, was thermal runaway. The firefighters all know what I'm talking about. It's how lithium ion battery fires start. And I couldn't find it. So I went to the search bar and I typed in thermal runaway. And I had to do it three times because I was so shocked because it didn't pop up once. I got zero hits. This is an environmental review of a battery storage plant that has lithium ion batteries, the largest in the world supposedly, and not once in the entire Part 1 of this does it mention thermal runaway. To me, that's appalling. And that, plus many of the other impact analysis and mitigation measure analyses are, have been deferred to DNV till a later time. But the whole point of this review is so that the public can understand this and can respond to it. So we have been denied that due process. Some of that information is in this OCA, but that's tucked away in these March 20 materials. It's not part of the EIR, so it's not part of the sequel process. So then I thought, well, Moss Landing should have a whole chapter. I'll look for Moss with a capital M. That came up three times. Two of them were public comments to the NOP, and once Rincon wrote about Moss Landing just to acknowledge that they had a facility there, but there's nothing about the incidents there, none, nothing about what they learned from the incidents or how they're going to prevent them here. None of that was in there. So then I thought I had seen the term cancer in there, so I looked for the term cancer. And I found that they did acknowledge that, that the construction and demolition activities could create cancer-causing toxic substances in the air that are airborne, and that could affect people nearby. But they decided that was going to be an insignificant impact. And I just want to say, for something that is not coastal-dependent, an industry that's quite hazardous to be planted in the middle of a tourist area and have possible exposure that could, could cause cancer to people, and say, well, it's, you know, it's not enough exposure, it's insignificant, it, it's another thing that's kind of appalling about this. But then I looked for the term amend, because we all know what, what Vistra wants to do is amend, they want to amend our entire vision and the spirit of our city. And I found that they talked about that 49 times. And, you know, we have to be careful. They cannot, this is someone coming from the outside that wants to amend who we are. Good timing. Let's not let them do that.
Thank you. Next up is Sharice Hanson, followed by Erin Oaks, and followed by Wendy Dyer.
My name is Sharice Hanson. I'm here as a community member, not as a chairperson of Morro Bay Chamber or the Harbor Advisory Board. As you might know, I have three boys. They're 18 years old, 15, 13, and all fourth-generation Morro Bay locals, born and raised. My youngest son, he has been on a travel baseball team for over half of his life, and his current team is BPA. Travel ball takes us all over the place, to Reno, Phoenix, Paso, San Diego. We spend money locally there, at hotels, restaurants, doing activities and shopping. The new Morro Bay High School baseball coach is Jared Zill, and he is also his coach for the nationwide club, BPA. Since 2011, the BPA club has been concentrating on education. BPA has placed thousands of athletes into all levels of college baseball, from junior to D1. They have placed 30 to 40 students a year in Orange County alone. Ultimately, they have been integral in placing over 100 athletes in college and pro-level baseball teams. They had a tournament at Lila Kaiser this past weekend. The team that, they paid 1,600 for two fields, and they got one port of potty and no bases. The fields and the parking lot are looking great, but the bathrooms, snack bar, fencing, scoreboards, and bleachers are in major need of repair. We need to put our best foot forward if we want to increase the city's revenue. We need to diversify. We can't function on tourism on the Embarcadero alone, and we know the community does not support increasing in property taxes. Investing in Lila Kaiser is investing in increased future revenue. We want to, more travel teams to come to Morro Bay. This revenue could help fund more staffing, which we are poorly, which we are greatly in need. So our park amenities might have, not have been stellar, but our weather finally was last weekend. So many families would prefer to travel here than to the Valley, Paso, or AG. AG's baseball is next to a wastewater treatment plant, which ironically doesn't have a working bathroom either. That being said, I propose that the City Council direct staff to make Lila Kaiser a priority. Is money a concern? Well, I have a remedy. Last year, at the direction of the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce, then CEO Eric Crawford and the board started a 501(c)(3), called the Chamber Foundation. This new foundation's goal is education to our community. This year, we raised 5,000 and are giving five Morro Bay High School students each a $1,000 scholarship. It was so fun to pick them. There's so many worthy candidates. Our small board of four agrees that improving Lila Kaiser is a great way to raise money that goes back into the sports education of our community. After I spoke with local businesses and many offered sponsoring the needed improvements, as a 501(c)(3), there's more of a reason with tax-deductible sponsors. So as long as council and staff agree to implement the use of these funds for Lila Kaiser, my team will go and collect some sponsors. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council and staff and mayor. My name is Erin Oaks of Morro Bay. I wanted to express my support for the previous speaker's sentiments about the Lila Kaiser Park. It's a beloved recreational institution in Morro Bay. It's been unfortunately kind of neglected for a while. I think that a partnership between the city and the 501(c)(3) would be crucial in bringing it back to life. And it's not just for the kids, it's just for the entire community, and I think it would benefit us as a whole. I wanted to talk about something that was on my mind. So I don't know if any of you on the council are following the Dana Reserve project. So this is, this massive housing project in Nopomo. And it, it's something that has intrigued me because it brought the community of Nopomo to, to a crossroads, a conversation about, you know, economic vitality, economic development, and housing, and why it's so important. But I just feel that it shouldn't take a contentious project to bring the community together to talk about something like this, you know, or a project as controversial as the BES project. So what I'm thinking is, we need to have a conversation about economic redevelopment, specifically an updated economic redevelopment plan. That is a partnership between the community and our city leaders and partners of economic interest. And we need to have a conversation to talk about how we can improve the economy in, in our community that really fits well within the, the character of the community, as opposed to having out-of-state corporate interests like Vistra dictating how they want to amend our plans and how they want to amend everything we're doing. I think it's, what Vistra is doing, in my honest opinion, it's invasive and predatory because this is not a conversation that Vistra's having with us. This is a conversation that Vistra is, is working with their consultants to project onto us without our consent. So I thought when they were talking about in their DEIR, this, the importance of amending a lot of our community plans, I think that was an overencroachment. And I think it was highly improper of Vistra to do that and to not really focus on what are the significant and avoidable, unavoidable impacts the project will create. So I, you know, I, I read the DEIR, I read that. It was the longest and saddest joke I've ever read. So it's something that we need to come together as a community and safeguard our interest by really, by the council and the community really taking charge of the conversation, not letting Vistra do that. So I hope we can come together, and I'm looking forward to being a part of that process. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, council and community and speakers who came before me. Thank you. I'm grateful to not be speaking about a car accident immediately after the firefighters, and I'm so grateful that you have these wonderful new tools to help people. As some people know, but others don't, on March 29th, a beloved member of our community, Chad Wood, 43-year-old worker at Shine and Sunshine, was killed in a fatal car accident on the one. It was the weekend of the very heavy rains and hail and other bizarre weather events. And I work with Chad, I worked with Chad, he was a friend of mine for a year, and he was training me to... He was a friend of mine for a year, and he was training me to work in the juice bar for the two weeks prior to his departure. So this has hit me really personally, and I've been in my new role in the Juice Cafe, the front person for the community's grief. So my purpose here today is to thank everyone who has come in to Shine, to bring flowers, to bring cards, to ask what happened, to see if we are okay, to see how Chad's family is doing. He's survived by his lifelong partner, Leah, three children under the age of 18, age seven, 10, and 15. The gratitude has been overwhelming, the beautiful stories shared of his kindness, of his perfect smoothies, his wonderful juice, his basketball moves, all of the fun times people had when they ran into him at the sauna at the community center. All of these things have meant the world to us, and we know they would mean the world to Chad. There are a lot of people out there who don't know that Chad has parted, as the original news stories did not list his name, so that the family could be notified first. And it is my hope that people who care about Chad, who are not at this meeting, or perhaps are not in Morro Bay right now, will know about this, and will be able to look up the GoFundMe that has been started. And thank you again so much, Morro Bay, and everyone who loves Chad, because this was a man who worked three full-time jobs to be able to support his family. They were living in pop-up tents and trailers on property trying to get into housing. They had not been able to do so, and thanks to the generous financial support of this community, the GoFundMe has reached $65,000. While that can never replace the life that was lost, as we know, in this time of capitalism, it's very hard to support three children as a single mother who's lost her husband. And so, I encourage everyone who cares about this family, and who cares about Chad, to please go, just Google, I tried to get a visual aid, but I don't know how to do that. If you Google "GoFundMe Chad Wood," I believe the direct link is https://gofundme.com/f/chad-wood. It is there that you will see all of the memories that people are sharing on the comment board, and you can see that number going up, which touches my heart every time it raises. There have been a number of people who have asked about a memorial. One was held in Bakersfield, where Chad was born and where his family is from originally. There will also be a memorial here on May 11th that the community is invited to, and I would encourage you to check the GoFundMe, or stop by Shine, or Sunshine if you have any questions about that. And thank you once again for being a community that cares about a person who's no longer with us, but who will always be with us in spirit. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, public comment is open to everyone.
That's a hard one to follow, but Terry Simons, Morro Bay. I went to Councilwoman Zar's meeting this Sunday, and my biggest takeaway from that event was how wonderful it is to have more than three minutes to speak. As you know, I can be very verbose, but I think that in addition to that, the ever-growing numbers of people that are coming to hers, and I'm sorry, Cindy, I haven't gotten to your meetings, but I will, I think these meetings provide a very valuable outlet for community input, so that you don't end up with a line all the way out the door every city council meeting during public comment. And I think that's real. And Zar was able to summarize two hours of comments in just a couple of minutes. That too is important. So, kudos to everybody. And that's all I've got for now. I will be back.
City Council staff members, I'm extremely grateful for the cleanup that occurred on Quintana down the creek. With that having been said, now that that area is clean, I have to wonder if the cleanup will continue from the cities and down the remainder of the creek, underneath the, behind limos, underneath the businesses, and then under Main Street, where it carries on to the bike and walking path. I've noticed a lot of debris, a lot of trash is accumulated along the fence line, and with our good weather, and with our weekends starting to get really busy with tourism and ongoing activities, people are going to be using that path a lot. So I just wanted to bring that up, and I know that, you know, the plates are filled, and they dump over because we have so many things, you know, to take care of, but I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you so much.
Anyone else for public comment on items not on the agenda?
Well, good evening now, I guess it is, Madam Mayor and council members and staff. I'm Steve Ray. I want to speak about the EIR, which was recently released. Unfortunately, it was only a 75-day review period. We'd asked for at least 90 days, given the complexity and all the detail that's in the item. But it was released for 75 days. Unfortunately, the final comment submission day is the day after Memorial Day, a day when a lot of people are traveling and aren't going to be around to submit comments. So, some planning needed to be rethought on that. Maybe a council will find it possible to extend that deadline just a little bit more for those people who may be out of town and won't be back yet. But the EIR, going through it in just even a cursory review, but especially when you start looking at some of the details in it, there are some serious issues in there. First of all, a lot of the facts are questionable, many of the analysis are flawed, and as Jean-Marie Colby, when she spoke a little earlier, pointed out to you, there's a lot of very important issues related to that EIR that are not even mentioned or discussed, let alone have facts or analysis connected to them. I'm very familiar with EIRs. I've probably dealt with 400 EIRs in my career. And this EIR is seriously flawed already, and highly insufficient from what I can see. But there's another issue with it too, and that is that the EIR discusses a project that's based upon what's called Alternative 3 in the EIR. And Alternative 3 is to build a power plant with three buildings on the site, and containing all of the batteries and everything. And then, with that building, or that project, you know, being connected to the rest of the property, and the power plant not being removed, what it looks like they are now proposing is to instead come up, have another plan. They're looking now, putting on 174 containers, as they're called, sites, instead of the three buildings, totally different configuration, much larger footprint, and yet the EIR does not analyze that at all. And this off-site consequences analysis that the fire chief mentioned does address that, but it wasn't submitted along with the EIR. So, they've got a lot of explaining to do about why are they changing their plan, and they should withdraw their application. They should redo the EIR for the new alternative that they are considering. And with that, thank you.
Did y'all have a nice Earth Day? Did y'all, yeah. Did y'all have fun patting yourselves on the back for not raping Gaia quite as viciously as you might have wanted? Speaking of rape, it is still Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Unfortunately, I don't think I'm going to be getting the one thing that I want, an official acknowledgement and apology from the city and the high school for their "tradition" of selling pinup calendars of the boys' varsity water polo players in their Speedos. I wasn't on the team, although I would probably still be able to sue on the grounds of having been traumatized. To this day, anytime I think of water polo or pinup calendars, the first image to pop into my mind was the April Boy. Sitting down, leaning back, legs spread, mouth open, a sultry look in his eyes, and two little Easter eggs tucked up against his Speedo. Happy Easter! Christ is risen! And that's not the only thing. So too is my ire. Some might argue that this is perfectly acceptable, so long as the subjects are 18. I would first point out that we should not assume that all the subjects were 18, nor should one find it in any way excusable for a school to sexualize its students. I should point out that whenever I have conversations with people who said they were a part of the booster or administration while I was going there, I always make sure to ask about this particular tradition. And invariably, they either don't remember, or deny that these calendars ever existed. There is a sickness in this house, and it must be excised with love. If not, it will be excised with fire.
Madam Mayor, Council, Ray Reardon with the Chamber. And I wasn't going to speak today, but the fire department was here, and they rescued me off of Black Hill, and I just wanted to thank them. That was Christmas Eve, so thank you. And it was just, I've never gone through that experience, but when I saw a lot of equipment, the only one they had for me was like a gurney with one wheel in the middle that they took me a half a mile, but I'm walking after three months, so thank you to our fire department. So, that's all I wanted to say.
My name's Betty Winholz. Before I get into the one topic I came to address, forgive me for forgetting, but I'm wondering if the fire department study that was requested, was that paid for by Vistra, or is that paid for by the city? Just so we can, the public can know that, who paid for that study. Excuse me. I really want to talk about enforcement in light of, that you're going to be talking about new fees later in the meeting, and particularly in light of the tree issues that have been coming up in North Morro Bay, both the palm trees and the cypress trees that were cut at Delmore Elementary. It's important to have the fees, but if we don't enforce what we're, when people, if we don't penalize when people violate those, it seems to me it's not really, it doesn't have any effect. And so, as we think about that, I'm hoping that our enforcement gets stronger, or even happens. Often in the past, it was stated, "Well, our fees, our penalties are so minimal, it doesn't really matter that we penalize or not." I think that was to the benefit of a developer, or developers who, you know, kind of skirted around certain things. But for me, it's real important that you enforce to set the standard. I think it's a two-edged sword, in that when you raise the fees, that makes people feel un-business friendly, but if you don't enforce, then how does that work? It's like you're not being sincere. So I'm encouraging you to look at enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment is still open for items not on the agenda. AGP?
Hi, Mayor Wixson. There are no raised hands to the Q.
Thank you very much. With that, I will bring it back to council, close public comment. The answer, Betty, is Vistra is being paid, or excuse me, the third-party analysis is being paid by Vistra, yes, for the safety analysis. We set that up a while ago. Wendy, thank you for sharing the information on the memorial service, and I think that's it. Thank you again to everybody for the cleanup, and the answer to that. On the rest, the cleanup is, a lot of that is private property, and the city will continue to work with stakeholders and move forward with what we can for continued cleanup in the ditch area.
Mayor, if I could add, also in regards to Vistra paying for the DNV report, to be crystal clear, the city has 100% control on how that money is spent and where it's spent. There's absolutely no control that Vistra has over the spending of that money, and that was part of the agreement that we had with them. So it's 100% city discretion.
Thank you for that, Mr. Newmeyer. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I have one speaker slip to start with, and that's going to be Steve Ray. After that, public comment will be open on the consent agenda.
Well, good evening again, Madam Mayor and council and staff. I'm still Steve Ray, haven't changed in the last 10 minutes. Although at the Coast Commission, now they're calling me Moro Ray, so I have a new name now, new moniker. Anyway, I wanted to address this letter about AB 2537. That's going regarding Assemblymember Addis's bill that would provide funding for communities and tribes and nonprofit groups to deal with wind-related issues, wind farm-related issues. First of all, the letter, I want to congratulate you, Madam Mayor, and whoever else had a hand in writing the letter. It was an excellent letter. I fully support it, and I think it's a good first step in this legislation. Hopefully, the legislation will get passed. But I would ask that the council consider making a recommendation to Assemblymember Addis, that three words be added to the legislation, just to clarify. The legislation provides money for what's called communities, which in this case would be like the city of Morro Bay, Cayucos, Los Osos, these are the communities they're referring to. And that's good, because we all need that money to take care of hiring consultants for the city and things like that. It also provides money for tribes to deal with this, but it also provides money for nonprofit groups. And it says in the legislation, nonprofit groups that support the communities. And it defines nonprofit groups as being 501(c)(3)'s and things like that. There are certain restrictions, regulations. The problem with that legislation and the language is that it says nonprofits that support the communities, and that limits it to, like in this case, the city of Morro Bay. A nonprofit supports the city. I'm not sure what it means by "supports the city," okay? Because I would like to add three words to the legislation, that supports the community or residents thereof, because that includes the people as well. Yeah, that would include the residents of the city, and any nonprofits that are working with the residents of the city, not necessarily the city and supporting the city itself, but are working with residents of the city on these issues, could also be included in that. And I would ask that you speak to the Assemblymember's office, and that should be fairly easy to do, to have those three words included in that, and make it more inclusive for all the nonprofit groups in the community. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on items on the consent agenda?
I would like to speak to the same item, 7E, which is in regard to the Addis letter. And mine's a question. It's not clear to me, as I read the language, whether or not, or what happens if the city gets money for consultants, and what the city decides isn't what the CEC may want. So are there strings attached, or is it like, we just get money to help us understand stuff? Or do we only get, do we have to give the money back if it's not what they want? I don't think that's the intent, but it's not clear, again... I don't think that's the intent, but it's not clear again in the language, so maybe something like that needs to be clarified. What the intent is in terms of receiving the money, are there strings attached?
Speaking to item 7B. I'm known for my rather harsh criticisms sometimes. I didn't even take a second look at this item when I first was looking at the agenda until I got the correspondence that included a letter from our acting financial officer. I have to say that it's one of the bravest letters I've ever seen from a government official. To acknowledge an error and to define the nature of the error in a way that a layperson could understand it is a brave thing to do. And I just wanted to acknowledge publicly how much I appreciate that. I've spent a lifetime doing spreadsheets, calculations, computations. I've made a million errors in my life. The phrase that comes to mind when dealing with computers is garbage in, garbage out, and you have to be ever vigilant. And I'm very pleased that our acting administrator had not only the vigilance, but the willingness to acknowledge an error and bring it so forward, publicly forward. Thank you.
Yes, Barry Brandon again. I too want to talk about 7B, this quarterly investment report. Financially, if you look at all the spreadsheet, and there's a lot of details in there, number, two things that jumped right out at me. Number one, we have a lot of money in Zion Bank. That's an interesting name for Zion Bank. It seems that, the question is, how did we choose that bank? And number two, there's some awful low returns that we're looking at. So I wonder if there's any way that we can have a, I'm going to call it a fiduciary examiner to take a look at what we're doing when we have as many dollars as this report says. I think there's something like $47 million. Is that the number I'm reading? 60 million. It's a huge number. And as I tell people many times, I came to California with $200, and I put it to work. And we're not putting this money to work, and it would make a lot of difference. I know we've had a big improvement because five years ago, our return was insignificant. We had some big changes. It is improving, but I think this really needs to be focused because we need the money. We have it there. I don't know why this money is not being used on the infrastructure that we have in this city. It seems to me that that money is there. Why do we have this much cash? And I think there needs to be some explanation of why there's this much cash there, because I know what my cash bank is. I don't keep a lot in my bank account. I keep it to work. And I'd like to know why we have that much money there and why we're not using it like paving streets. I know where there's some sewer lines that are leaking. There's a lot of decisions that need to be made, and I'm not hearing it. So it's a nice report, nice we found an error, and I'm glad that we're looking there, but it appears to me that needs an awful lot more examination. Our CFAC committee is, we've lost some members because they were disillusioned, because they were not lis, the city in the past, they were not listening to what the CFAC had to say. And I'd sure like to see if we can get some better recommendations to how to handle this money, because I'm disappointed. Thank you.
This is going to be for consent agenda, item 7G. Reading the proclamation for Arbor Day, I felt a little nauseous and very angry. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, and fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. As far as I can tell, these lines perfectly exemplify exactly the kind of neoliberal nonsense that is at the forefront of our extractivist society. Firstly, our trees are, or sorry, our streets are lined with non-native or even invasive species. Second, no amount of replanting saplings can offset the harms caused by ravaging established forests for your so-called renewable resources. In this context, one could consider a working forest to also be a zombie forest. If you know anything about botany or ecology, you kind of know what I'm talking about. Thirdly, our once verdant hills are now barren, smothered in invasive grasses, directly driving desertification. Forests were the first and shall always be the greatest love of my life. And though I found myself separated from them, and though I watched them slowly being murdered for the sake of your greed, I will never forget that I owe them everything. The trees are our saviors and our protectors and our life-givers, and the forests that shall grow from the grave of the American empire shall be grand indeed. And for those watching at home during my public comment, oh, the looks on your faces.
Anyone else for public comment on items on the consent agenda? AGP, is there anyone in the queue?
Hi, Mayor Wixson. There are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment on the consent agenda and bring it back to Counsel. Just a, thank you, I turned it off. Mr. Brandon, thank you for your questions on the 7B, on the funds. As you well know, budget hearings are coming up very soon, and CFAC and Public Works just had a joint meeting in which they discussed capital projects, and I'm sure we'll be looking at how some of those funds will be allocated. And there has been an ongoing conversation about the return on investment for some of those funds that are older, whether we continue to keep them locked in at those rates or cut your loss and move them to a higher rate. So those are all things that the Finance Department and that team are all working on, so stay tuned. The question on the reporting, I don't know if the Harbor Director has any comment on that, on AB 2537 regarding our requirements for funding that we might receive, how we use it, or how we report?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, typically, when these bills are written, we don't get a chance to see how the grant will be presented to us. So, you know, it's kind of one of those situations, you've heard it in the past, until everyone gets to read it, we're not going to know exactly. But typically, there's no strings attached to those funds. They have a specific application process. We follow the process. We tell them what we're going to do, and then we do it. So, but we don't have specifics yet on how that process is going to go.
Thank you. And I think similar to the $1 million that the county has, that we've, we'll be receiving some work from McDonald. There's a requirement for accounting for any of the money that we use, how it's been used, and we will be considering a peer review group also overseeing how the funds are used from some of those grants. With that, I will, is there any other questions or anything on the consent agenda? I'll see if anyone wants to pull any items.
Mayor, I'd like to pull item 7E.
7E?
Yes, due to a potential conflict.
Okay. Anyone else? I ask for a motion to approve items 7A through 7G, with the exception of 7E.
Are you making that motion?
Yes.
Oh, I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, 7E. Councilmember Ford.
I'm going to recuse myself from that item. So do I need to get down, or?
No, you're fine. Thank you. With that, I will move approval of item 7E. Ask for a second.
I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. With that, we will move on to item 8A, and I will turn it over to our Administrative Services Department.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, community members, colleagues. This evening, it's my pleasure to share with you the updated proposed master fee schedule for the coming fiscal year. I have a quick review to present to you. Before I get started, I want to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of the city's staff who contributed to this update. We're in the middle of budget development, as you heard, and we had to add this update on top of all of the other finance work that Department Heads and their staff are completing. So I want to just say many thanks to all of them for their great work. Specifically, on my staff, I want to acknowledge Melissa Green, our senior budget accountant, who took the lead on this update and put in many, many hours and the fine details and made some great improvements to the format and functionality of the document. And with that, I'll get into the quick overview of this master fee schedule, which I believe will be a paper version, since our PowerPoint electronic version is not working tonight, but we'll make this work. Does anyone else need a copy before I launch in? Emily, can you speak up a little bit more? Yes. I often get that feedback. How's that? Okay. There are extra copies of the fee schedule in the back of the room. So this is a public hearing and adoption of Resolution 2624 to adopt the fiscal year 2024-25 master fee schedule. The city reviews and revises this master fee schedule annually. The schedule specifies what charges are approved for various city-provided services. The fees are charged when individuals receive some direct material benefit beyond services offered to residents at general taxpayer expense, and this process is governed by state constitution and Moro Bay municipal code. That's chapter 3.34. This fee schedule was noticed and posted online on April 11, 2024. The development-related fees can be implemented no sooner than 60 days after city council adoption, so these fees will be effective July 1st of the new fiscal year. We applied the Long Angeles, Los Angeles, Long Beach, Anaheim Consumer Price Index, or CPI adjustment. This year was 3.5%, and that's a December-over-December increase. We also applied the California Construction Cost Index to those construction fees, or construction-related fees, which December-over-December again was 9.4%. There are a few exceptions to full cost recovery, which I wanted to go over with you all. One is the appeal fee, which is to appeal a city decision. This fee study identified the cost at $6,994 in 2019. Now it would be higher due to CPI. Counsel has decided in the past to set the fee at a much lower rate for going full cost recovery. Consistent with prior counsel direction, the proposed fee for the coming fiscal year would be $366. Cost recovery for this coming fiscal year is estimated to be less than 5% of actual cost, based on the 2019 fee study amount. Additionally, there's a commercial fishing slip fee, consistent with prior counsel decision. This was increased eight feet, $8 per foot in October 2022. The 24-25 rate remains $8 per foot. And I wanted to add that the Moro Bay Commercial Fishermen's Organization agreed to provide $100,000 in grant funds. Some changes to go over with you tonight for this fee schedule are the solar permitting costs have been reduced. This is a change that complies with California Government Code and benefits our community by making solar energy a bit more accessible. Also, the laser fish fee for planning and building documents, scanning and storage, has been renamed document storage fee, and additional fees were added for non-plan set pages. Tiered fees have been added for Public Works to reflect increased staff time for larger, more complex projects, and new fees have been introduced in Public Works, Harbor, and Recreation to ensure cost recovery for services such as fog inspections, launch ramp haulout, and private special event processing. New fees have been added to ensure consistency across all departments and a fair, equitable system for all. Similar to community development, Public Works will now charge an application reinstatement and four-plus inspections. Similar to Fire, Harbor Department will now charge for negligent incident response. Fees for discontinued programs and services, such as the teen center and trolley rentals, have been eliminated. This decision reflects the city's commitment to aligning fees with current services and not burdening the public with unnecessary changes. We have department heads here available to answer any questions you may have. The recommendation is that the city council conduct the formerly noticed public hearing, which we're doing, review the proposed master fee schedule, and adopt Resolution Number 2624 to update the city's master fee schedule for fiscal year 2425. This resolution will rescind Resolution Number 2623, which adopted the current fiscal year 2023-24 master fee schedule and replaces it in its entirety for the new fiscal year. With that, I'll turn it over to you for questions.
Thank you very much. To my left, questions for Ms. Conrad? Any questions?
I think it's more of a, kind of a historical question, and I'm trying to, I mean, I think I can remember accurately why we were charging such a low fee for the, to appeal to the city. But if, like, if anyone here has institutional knowledge from that time period, if you could refresh my memory as to why we reduced it to such a low rate, especially after considering, like, the cost?
Yes, prior councils had kept the fee that low, in the interests of making sure that it wasn't cost prohibitive for residents to appeal planning commission decisions. So it's at councils' discretion whether they want to keep it at that level or not. But yeah, that's why councils did it before. The thinking then was that if you want to appeal something from Planning Commission, and it's going to cost $6,000, $7,000, that is certainly prohibitive, and that was the logic from councils before.
So I, my question is, do we have any sort of data on how much we have, how much, how much cost recovery we have lost because of the amount of appeals that we had? I would say, let's say, in the last year. Is there a way to, I mean, I should have said this ahead of time, so we could have prepared it, so that's my fault for asking this on the spot. But I'm just curious if maybe our Finance Department or any of our...
I would think that at a minimum, you could take the number that was calculated back in 2019 for city staff costs for each appeal, and then you would just multiply that by the appeals that have come forward. I do know one thing that we're doing for cost savings is that my office has been working with city staff to have more reimbursement agreements with planners, so that when appeals are brought forward, the planner, the developer's actually going to be reimbursing attorney fees, because attorney's office doesn't work with the planning department really that much for a planning commission items, but when appeals are done, of course, there's legal fees. So we're going to be covering that through developer reimbursement agreements. As for staff time, time and materials, whether or not that estimate really covers all the time involved, I would assume that it's a minimum maybe at best, but that's certainly the floor. You'd have to ask the planning department, I guess, for past appeals, how much time and materials they would equate with handling an appeal.
Yeah, and I doubt, I mean, do you just know that off the top of your head? Yeah, no, that's unfair to have you just bust out that number right now.
And yeah, I'm sorry to put Mr. Codron on the spot. I know he hasn't been here for appeals, so.
Yeah, I just see, I'm just, I'm just, I don't even know how many appeals that we had over the last year, and I'm just kind of trying to wrap my head around. I remember, because I believe I was on a past council that decided to have the fee so low, and I know that it was, you know, to keep it affordable so that people from our community have the ability to afford to contest, you know, something that they don't believe belongs in their neighborhood or in their area of their business. But I'm just curious, you know, cost-wise, like, how significant has this been, you know, financially for us? So just, just wanted to bring that up. And that's really the only question I have right now. I'd like to hear from others.
I'm going to piggyback off our Councilmember Ford here for a moment, and I was looking on the, I'm not sure what page this is. It's under community development fees, under notification fees. I'm not sure if this equates, but planning commission hearing is $541. I'm not sure if this equates, but Planning Commission Hearing is $541. So I guess where I am at is trying to figure out, you know, how do we look at a Planning Commission Hearing? Is there anything different that we, in the way that we look at cost recovery from a Planning Commission Hearing as opposed to one that's brought before council? Maybe you can help me with that, Michael? Mr. Codron?
Sure. So I think that, you know, the costs are very similar between holding a Planning Commission meeting and holding a city council meeting. As the city attorney described, however, there is not legal representation at every Planning Commission meeting, so that's one of the differences, where an appeal to the city council would involve more cost. But we have the same sort of coverage in terms of the technological support. It's in this room. There is less staff at Planning Commission meetings, so city council meetings are, you know, to the extent that you're calculating time of the staff that's here, there's more staff at city council meetings.
I'm going to, I'm going to hold out for a minute and just kind of digest that. Thank you, Mr. Codron.
Questions to my right? Councilmember Barton? Any questions?
I, I had a question about the, this is in the Community Development Fees, Vacation Rental Monitoring and Administration Fee, Annual Permit Fee. It's saying $709. What is it currently? Do we know?
Yes, the monitoring fee is $685 per permit.
Okay, thank you.
On that item, what is, and to follow up on a question that was brought up by a community member, what is the enforcement on these, on these items? You know, is there, is there, are there penalties? Are they enforced? I guess, this one is an easy one, the short-term rentals?
Yeah.
And we've had this conversation, but...
Right. Yeah, so vacation rentals are monitored, and there is enforcement where there is enough information to pursue, you know, to the extent that it's illegal vacation rental, and we go through the normal due process in terms of notification and a notice of violation, then, you know, there are fees to the extent that, or fines that can be levied to the extent that that person continues to operate their business illegally. I am preparing to bring forward to the city council an update on the program, because some changes have been made recently to improve our oversight and enforcement. And as part of that, we'll present information to the city council about the potential for levying larger fines that are now available under state law, specifically for short-term rentals.
And so that will be added after this is approved?
To the, yeah, to the extent that the city council wants to...
If, if, yeah.
Yeah, charge, and that's a separate, that's separate from the fee schedule, this is, this would be a fine for non-compliance.
Yeah, to clarify, this is cost recovery fees, and what Director Codron and I are working on, at least on my side, is bringing back higher penalties for not compliance with, not complying with STR regulations. Penalties are different than cost recovery fees, and these are all cost recovery fees.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, don't go away, because I want to ask now, then, on that very question. Thank you, Councilmember Barton, is $685, and it's going to $709 for monitoring fees? Is that specific, does monitoring fees is code enforcement? What is monitoring fees? Because that's $171,000 if you times it by the 250 short-term rentals we have, that we know of.
Yeah, in terms of the costs that I'm aware of, and I can certainly bring back more detail on this topic for the city council, but in terms of the activities that I'm aware of, there are contracts with consultants that assist us with the oversight and enforcement process, and then we do have staff that works in this area as well. So I wasn't part of the previous study that was the basis for that amount of cost recovery, but there's quite a bit of work in terms of maintaining the list of 175 short-term rentals, as well as the annual process of licensing and, you know, for new vacation rentals, there's analysis that occurs as relates to the buffers that are required by the ordinance. There's inspection requirements and other aspects that drive those costs.
So this fee is encompassing all of those items, not just enforcement?
That's my understanding. It's the total administration of the program.
I didn't know if this was like a code enforcement thing, or it's encompassing all those expenses.
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
Thank you. That's the only question I had. Anyone else? Questions? With that, I will open public comment for this public hearing on this item. I have no speaker slips, so please feel free to come forward.
Good evening once again, Terry Simons. I have a long history of working in the community development area, and I have previously spoken on the disparity that I see, particularly in the coastal development permit application fees, where in an administrative fee is roughly $1,500, and a planning commission fee is $15,000. To me, it seems like most of the work, and I could be totally wrong on this, but most of the work of reviewing something to give an administrative approval can't be that much different. I recognize that there's agendizing items and writing staff reports, which you still have to do the same, you have to have the same understanding of the project. And I've always wondered why there was such a strong disparity between the two, two actions. I'm not suggesting that the administrative fees be raised, but I suggest that perhaps the conditional use permit and the fees for just a straightforward permit, coastal development permit, are maybe a little fat. And my experience with the prior director was, is that it seemed that almost every application that came in got directed directly to the Planning Commission, and it was almost impossible to request an administrative fee. I'm hoping that in this new enlightened age, we will see something different.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Jeff Echols, resident of North Morro Bay. I'm going to follow Terry, because he talked about development fees, and I'm going to talk about development fees. I've had over a decade of studying development fees, very carefully served for the City of Paso Robles six or seven years ago on their mayor-appointed Reform Ad Hoc Group, and have done a lot of advocacy on it. So a couple of things I want to, I want to talk about, some big-picture items, and then I've got maybe a specific item for you as well. The big-picture item, and I've had this discussion with a few of you, and this is, this isn't for tonight in terms of the development fees, so I want to plant a seed. So once we get a permanent community development director and go through the fee-setting process, this is for really that time period. And when we look at development impact fees, there's a very thorough process called a NEXUS study that you have to go through to amend those fees. But what I, what I, here's my observation for you. All that said, I don't see a whole lot of graduation in our development fees. And what I mean by that are different tiers that incentivize the type of building that we want to see in our city. I'll give you one example that we do have, a single-family residential, a single-family or residential addition of 500 square feet or less is exempt from development impact fees. So we're incenting people to build a 500-square-foot home or less, or to, if they do an addition, that's an incentive for them to keep that cap at 500 square feet. They don't have to pay any development impact fees. Beyond that, it's all at the same rate. And so what a lot of jurisdictions are doing these days is using a tiered approach to make the fees minimal or as small as possible for, let's say, something like workforce housing or affordable-by-design housing. And then, when you get into the McMansion category, you want to disincentivize that, so you impose heavier fees. Our affordable housing in lieu fee is really small, so that can be looked at down the road and graduated. And then the one specific thing that I've got for you tonight is there's a funding assistance application fee under the Affordable Housing in lieu program. And what I believe that refers to is if a nonprofit builder is coming to the city and wants to apply for affordable housing fees, they have to pay the city $875 to do so. That doesn't make sense to me, and that fee shouldn't be there, because we want to incentivize affordable housing developers to come and develop in the city. So that's one specific that you might be able to take a look at tonight, but the rest is planting seeds for down the road.
Betty Winholz, I want to thank Mr. Echols for his comments, because I think that's important to getting what we want here built. My concern about the fees, and I don't know if it's a shall in the ordinance, or if you have the option, but when you go to the second year, it says that you'll go with the CPI from LA, and that's 9.1%. That's a huge increase that's being applied to everyone's fees before the little 3.5 or whatever it is for this coming year. So I find that overall figure really large, and I would hope that there's some way you can bring that down, unless you're mandated with a shall that you have to go with the CPI. But I wonder if you have the option to make it less, because that's a huge jump. And part of the example would be what Councilmember Ford brought up, is with the appeals fee. So it's at 300 roughly right now, and in the document, it says that it's going up by 9.1% to adding $36, $336. I did the math, and it's actually a 12% increase, adding $36 is a 12% increase. So I don't know if that was by the two different years, or if that was cumulative. So, and to answer the question, or from the public's perspective, your appeals is a way to keep your public involved in the process, and that's why they're lower. They're not supposed to be cost recovery. That's not the point. And they, they, you know, when I first started in this area of public participation, they were $250. So they're not quite doubled, maybe they've gone up by 75%, which is a lot to me. It has a chilling effect, and, you know, that's a legal term, where it keeps people from wanting to participate. And, and we have money coming into the city through, you know, our, our property taxes, our sales tax, all our other revenues. That helps support the staff. You don't have to do cost recovery for every single action. That's, that's not the point. We already pay you in taxes and other ways. So in this particular instance, with the appeal fee, you know, I would be asking you to stay at 300. I don't think you need to add the 36, if you want to keep people involved in your government and what's in the neighborhood. The question came up, how many appeals have we had? And I would guesstimate that in last year, maybe, maybe half a dozen. So I don't, I don't think it's outrageous, and sometimes it's from the developer, sometimes it's from the public, but this is, this is an area I have a real passion about. And just in closing, I really don't like the idea that my business license fee is going up so much.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, is there anyone in the queue?
Hi, Mayor Wixom. There are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will bring this back and close this public hearing item. Thank you. Can we address the CPI on the 9%? That question, the 3% to 9%?
I am looking into it right now, if I could just have a moment.
Sure. I'm just wondering if it's actually 12% then?
No, there was two different increases, two different indices used. One was the CPI, the other was a CCCI, and they were two very different amounts. They were applied to different fees, not the same fees, if that helps clarify anything. Yeah, okay.
Oh, I see the difference. I thought, for some reason, I thought it was CPI on both of them, not CCCI. Thank you for that clarification. Council, questions and comments to my left?
Yeah, I was curious about the question as to the funding assistance application fee, and I would just like to know a little bit more about it.
Sure. So as the city collects in lieu fees for development projects that don't provide affordable housing, it collects money into a fund that then the city council can allocate to development projects that come forward. However, there's staff work involved in that, and so those recommendations that are developed, there's some analysis of the fund and of the project, and how much, you know, award on a per-unit basis, and there's, there's coordination, and then there's the meeting and the report to the city council. And so as a cost recovery item, there is work associated with that, but if the city council didn't, you know, felt like that the amount of the fee would discourage requests, then it would be a policy decision to lower the fee.
I guess I'm still, I'm still thinking about what Mr. Echols brought up regarding the incentivizing development, and I'm just curious, Mr. Codron, if you, in your experience, in your life experience, what you feel, like, if you feel that there's other ways that we can do it, or if, in this fee schedule, if there's ways to incentivize, if there's any changes that we could make, or if this is as good as we can do here in the city of Morro Bay right now to incentivize different types of housing?
Right. Well, I would say not with this fee schedule. However, the city is contracting with a consultant, David Tosick Associates, to do a development impact fee study, so the NEXUS study that Mr. Echols spoke to. And what those studies do, I've worked with a number of them in the past, is they present to decision-makers sort of the maximum amount that the city can charge back to a developer for a development impact fee. So that might be a transportation fee, a parks and recreation fee, a public safety fee, all those items on the list. What those items are doing, what that fee is based on, is the cost of the infrastructure that's needed to serve that development. So that's what the meaning of NEXUS in this case is, that there's a direct relationship between the impact of the development project, like, for instance, more demand on parks, and then the costs to provide park land and develop parks for new population in terms of circulation. It might be projects that the city has identified that are capacity projects on roadways, might be roundabout improvements, where new development has a share of that cost. So the city council, once that NEXUS study is prepared, it'll be presented back to the city council, and whether or not the city charges the full amount of the NEXUS or not is a policy decision. But I think important to understand is that, to the extent that the city is not charging development the full amount under the NEXUS, then the city is taking on, essentially subsidizing those projects, taking on more than a fair share of the cost of those projects. And that, all that analysis will be spelled out in the report and presented to the city council in the future.
That makes so much more sense. I appreciate your response, because, yeah, I think that until we get that, it's hard to address how we can, as a city, can incentivize that development. But I really do appreciate those comments, Mr. Echols, and I know that you work hard, you know, regarding housing in our community. So, yeah, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Barton?
I have one question, and that was, I'm seeing all kinds of different development fees, but, and calling out different kinds of things that are on this list. I'm just curious about, I don't see anything for ADUs, and I'm just wondering, is that something? something that should be broken out separately, or do we just, you know, should we just have it combined with other things?
You don't see a separate fee for ADU?
I didn't. I may have skipped over it, but I'm, I was just curious because it's such a, you know, it's a big deal with the state. It's, I just thought it would be here, and I didn't see it.
Yeah, so ADUs in terms of the construction permits, they're, ADUs are allowed by right, and so there isn't a planning process for ADUs, or it's, it's a administrative process for an ADU. But in terms of the building permit, it's based on valuation, just like any other building construction. There are limits in terms of what fees can be passed on to ADUs, so ADUs are not subject to development impact fees. They're not subject to requirements for fire sprinklers unless the primary resident already has fire sprinklers. So those things are, when our building permit technician applies fees to a permit, you know, that person's aware of what fees apply to the particular project. But they're, they're not separate or different from another, you know, from a single-family home or another type of.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I would just like to know, Mr. Codran, about the question about the difference between the $15,000 planning commission fee versus the $1,500 administration fee, and why there's such a disparity?
Yeah, I think it's all the work that's associated with generating the staff reports, evaluating the application materials, and conducting a public hearing. I know that notification is a separate fee item, but there's just, there's a lot more involved. Fundamentally, these dollar amounts come from a study that looks at specific projects and assesses how much staff time is involved with processing those. You know, in addition to, you know, these flat fees, the city also has the ability, and it, as spelled out by the schedule here, to charge the full cost of time and materials to developers as part of a development application process. And so as the city attorney spoke to, we are doing more reimbursement agreements with developers as a way to make sure that there is, there's cost recovery on those items, and especially the larger projects. It makes sense to do it that way. But the $15,000 is essentially, you know, some applications come in and they're easier to process, some applications come in and they're very complex and, you know, might drive more cost, and the $15,000 is more of the average, right? That's the way fee studies work, is when there's a fee on the schedule, not every use permit or coastal development permit is the same. Some take more work, some take less work, but the study has the methodology to determine that this is the appropriate amount to charge to ensure that the policy of cost recovery that the city council has is met.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Landry would expand upon that. You know, these are the floor generally for time and materials. So this is like Director Codran was saying, is, you know, what they should cost for big projects. We've been working on, like the director was saying, having reimbursement agreements, and it takes a little bit more time on staff's side, but it makes sure that we capture the extra costs involved with processing large projects. And so we shift over to a time and materials, and our master fee schedule does allow the option at the community development department's discretion to shift over from the fixed fee to say, no, we're going to go with time and materials. And then we get a deposit from the developer. So for example, the 3,300 Panorana project, like that's what we're doing with that one because we want to make sure we don't leave money on the table, and the city isn't basically paying extra money that the developer should be paying.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Someone interested in making a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion after review of the proposed master fee schedule. A motion that the council adopt resolution number 26-24, which updates the city's master fee schedule for fiscal year 2024 through 2025. This resolution rescinds resolution number 26-23, which adopted the current fiscal year 2023 through 2024 master fee schedule and replaces it in its entirety for the next fiscal year.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to move on to our business items, and I think we'll take a five-minute break. Thank you, everyone. We're going to resume our meeting. With that, we will begin our business section. Item 9A, consideration of a statement of support for Visit Morro Bay for its efforts in negotiation with State Parks on permit fee required to enable Ironman event using Morro Bay State Park race course. And I will turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This was brought before the city council for consideration because we ran into a bad snag with the Ironman event. Last year, the Ironman event used a race course in the city, and that was the first year the event was held in the city. And then we, based on the community feedback, city team felt that it will be better if Ironman race course could use State Parks. And we shared that with State Parks, I was, shared that with Ironman, and Ironman agreed, and they had communicated with State Park, and the permit fee is going to be $31,000. And so then, Ironman told, advised the city that they are unable to pay for the whole, the full fee. Visit Morro Bay, in their consideration of support towards them and promoting this event, had agreed to contribute towards this fee. And Visit Morro Bay Board also asked the city council to consider a support, issue a supportive statement so that Visit Morro Bay can help perhaps an Ironman to negotiate this State Park fee a bit lower. So that's the gist of this item, and then there's more to it, of course, but I'll stop here.
Thank you. Questions? Am I right? Any questions to my left? Any questions?
Yeah, I have, do you have a question? City manager, Kimball, have you had any discussions with State Park to inquire, or has this only been negotiations with, you know, Visit Morro Bay and Ironman itself? Have you had any discussions with them?
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Staff has been in contact with State Parks. I believe Chief Watkins has spoken with State Park, and I'll let her speak on what, her experience, and I also spoke to State Park on this matter as well. Chief Watkins, take over, please. Thank you.
Just to provide a little bit of history, whoop, fell off. This was something, so when, when the city really was looking at this event, it was presented certainly by Ironman for the use of Lower State Park Road for a lot of different reasons. So certainly staff were under the impression that that was something that we were going to work toward. This time last year, in this same fashion, it was an extensive or a large invoice from State Parks with really no real definition on, on why the price was so high. It seemed exorbitant, especially for Ironman, who does these events up and down the state of California. And, you know, they use other portions of State Parks up and down California, and this was beyond anything that they had paid to date. So obviously, this would set a precedent, certainly, which is a concern. So I worked together with the race director, Tom Cotton, last year to try to get a better understanding from where State Parks was coming from. last year to try to get a better understanding from where State Parks was coming from. And we certainly took the neighbor approach and, and really knew the impact that this was going to have on the run course, certainly the impact it was going to have on our Embarcadero, on our businesses, to not be able to use this section of State Parks. And so, we tried very, very hard. And we could not come to a resolution last year. And so, at the beginning of this year, for those negotiations, we were really hoping for the opportunity to try to get a better understanding. And, and again, we haven't reached that conclusion yet. So it's certainly been our staff's understanding and our discussions, certainly discussions with Michael Wamboldt, that this is an important part of this run course to make this event, you know, what it, what we envisioned in our eyes as, as successful for, for a lot of different reasons. And moving forward, this would be very difficult to continue with the shortened run course and the three laps that we had to do, and the impact that that truly had on our main street as well as our Embarcaderos. So this is an important item, and certainly something that we have, as staff on many different levels, have tried to address with State Parks, and we just haven't really gotten anywhere.
Okay. I also spoke to, and I agree with Chief Watkins, I also spoke to State Parks. And then their response was that this has, has happened before, and then Ironman seems not willing to cooperate with State Parks with the permit fee. And, and State Parks state that this fee is already as low as State Parks could, could provide, based on the impact they calculated. So that's, that's my, that's my input, as far as my communication with State Park goes. I also, I'm sorry, I also want to let the council know that Michael Wamboldt and the CEO with, with Morro Bay is on the line, if you have any question for him.
Any other questions to my left? Councilmember Burton, any questions?
No questions.
I do have one, sorry. But you want me to wait until you ask?
Go ahead.
Okay. I do have a question, and maybe this, gosh, I don't know, I don't know who would be the, the person to direct this question to. But in preparation for the contract to be presented to the city of Morro Bay, was there any, like, I'm trying to remember how Ironman, when they presented to us, you know, the, the costs and the revenue and all of that, was there any research done regarding, like, was there any outreach to State Parks prior to that presentation to us? I'm just, I'm just curious, because I, I just feel like this is such a bummer. So, anyway, I'm just curious if that happened, you know, if, if we know if there was any outreach to State Parks, to our specific State Parks, not just in general for Ironman, but to give them any inclination as to what our costs would be? Or was it just a guess and based off of experience? Do we know, does any, anyone know that?
Good evening, Council. Michael Wamboldt here, Executive Director of Visit Morro Bay. Yeah, there were, from what I remember, there was preliminary conversation with, between Ironman and State Parks, that this was coming, that the event was coming, and while the contracting, but there wasn't a cost given to them until about three months before last year's event, leading up to there. So there wasn't an understanding of cost when this was going in. And then during the contracting portion, it was, I think, you know, the word to assume is probably not the best piece, but the conversation was open with them, and they thought, based off of their previous involvement with State Parks, that the fee wasn't going to be this, this high. So there wasn't, that costing analysis wasn't there until a couple of months before last year's race.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wamboldt. Okay, I don't, I don't have any further questions right now. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, is Mr. Cotton on the line? Did I hear that?
He is, he is not on the line.
He is not. Maybe you can help me with this, Michael. I was just wondering, how, how does State Parks assess their fees for events like this? Just out of curiosity, whether it's where we are or other.
Yeah, so what we've seen on this event in particular, the, there is a, an emergency cost fee on, on the line item, and then the larger fee on this is a impact to serving guests, essentially. And that impact portion, Ironman doesn't have a line item for that billing. And so, it is a percentage of impact to guests. And that is, seems to be somewhat of an ambiguous term in the, in the pricing piece. And so, that's where, that's where this, the negotiation between Ironman and all of this is, seems to be the sticking point on the, on that port, on that portion.
So then, was our process somehow different here, dealing with State Parks in terms of the Ironman event being held here? Was the process somehow different there?
Doesn't seem like the process was different between Ironman and State Parks to start with. Billing is definitely different than what Ironman has had to deal with, with other State Parks around California.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Would that public comment is open on this item?
Betty Winholz, it seems to me, State Parks is a state agency, even though it's a local unit, that it would be up to Ms. Addis or Mr. Laird to step in, because they are our representatives at the state level. And it seems to me some pressure should be brought to bear from those political people on the department, whether they do it at the state level, and then it comes down, or if they contact our local, but, but if we have a personal problem, we call our representatives, and they help us out. And I don't think the city is any different, that we should call on Ms. Addis and Mr. Laird to help out.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, is there anyone in the queue?
What woman, Madam Mayor?
Say, AGP?
I see no raised hands in queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. This, this is a letter of support, just to answer your question, Ms. Winholz. This is a letter of support, and I will refer to Michael in a minute. But this is, Assembly Member Addis is actively supporting this. Our city manager has reached out and had several conversations already with State Park, trying to advocate and, and support this process with Visit Morro Bay. But Michael, I don't know if you have something you want to add to that?
That is correct. You know, trying to make this work for the city and State Parks together, with support from the city, we're looking to hopefully engage Assembly Member Addis into the conversation to see what type of agreement that we can come to, to make this work for everybody.
Thank you. And again, I know that our city manager has been engaged in several conversations with them, trying to pursue an avenue here to, to support this course change. So, comments? Any comments?
I'm just going to make a comment. I do know, we do have several community members, actually, that are going to be involved in the event themselves. And I, I do know that it seems to be, I don't know, maybe more, I wouldn't say more of a exciting, exciting thing to have a full course going through the parks, as opposed to loop-de-loop, is what I'm calling it. I know that Councilmember Ford, who is there handing out medals, said it was hard for some of the athletes to even know if they had done all the loops. And, and so, I mean, I, I think I could see the importance of having a straight course, as opposed to, you know, the loop-de-loops, if you will. So that's just my comment.
Thank you. Any comments? Are we needing to vote on this, Mr. Newmeyer? Is this just a consent, take action? What, what is?
The action item is to authorize you, Mayor, to issue a letter of support.
Okay, just wanted to clarify if it was just direction or, and, and I would piggyback on that, you know, last year's course was really challenging. And the goal, in talking with Michael and the others over the last few weeks, this will allow earlier access to the Embarcadero in that area by taking that course out that way, because you won't have them looping through so many times. And so, it will lessen the impact at, at an earlier point, which will be good for our businesses and for our residents who want access. It still will be somewhat delayed, but it will be sooner than it would if they were going through three times. So the residents to the east side will still have full access out of their community, so it won't impact them at all. I appreciate, Michael, I appreciate you hosting the two meetings, and Chief Watkins for being there to answer questions for the community and the businesses. And I think if anyone has any questions based on these comments tonight, they can reach out to Visit Morro Bay or to the police chief for, for any clarification on that. And with that, I will move approval and look for a second of item 9A.
I just want to, if you're going to, if we get a motion and it goes through, I'm going to abstain from this vote, just because I think it, after comments tonight, it could be too convoluted. So I will, I will be abstaining from it. So if you do it, just like a...
Oh, because of Assemblymember?
Yeah, I just think that it'd be better, I think it'd be better that I abstained, so...
Thank you. So I'm looking for a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstention. Thank you. With that, we will move on to item 9B, and I will turn it over to the city clerk. And this will be regarding our continuation of transitioning our, to electronic paperless filing.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This item was presented to council at the April 9th meeting. And following public comment and discussion, the council directed staff to return with a modified version of the ordinance that would allow for limited exceptions to the electronic filing requirement to accept statements in paper format from those who do not have computer access or familiarity with computer programs. That provision has been inserted as subsection 2.48.03OB, which is shown in red line text in the agenda item. Happy to read that if anyone would like. Should the council decide to move forward with this item, the motion-ready language, including the full title of the ordinance, is listed in the recommended action section of your report. And I can read that for you also, if you'd like. Open to any questions you may have.
Questions to my right? Councilmember Burton?
No questions.
Yes? No? Thank you. To my left, questions? With that, I will open public comment on this item.
Thank you, Betty Winholz. I want to say thank you to the council for listening to the public last meeting, and knowing that there are some of us that aren't that swift. So thank you for changing the language. Appreciate that. Within that red new statement, it does say that this will be changed by amendment or by resolution. And just as a matter of policy, I don't think we should ever change the municipal code by resolution. So I would hope you would delete those three little words right there, and just leave it as an amendment. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP?
Mayor, I see no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I will bring it back to council, close public comment, and ask for any comments. Anyone? I'll ask for a motion.
I'll move that we introduce for first reading by title only, with further reading waived, ordinance number 667, and ordinance of the City Council of the city of Morro Bay, adding chapter 2.48 to Title II of the Morro Bay Municipal Code relating to electronic and paperless filing of campaign disclosure statements and statements of economic interests.
Thank you so much. And a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. And a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. With that, thank you to our city clerk for doing all that also.
I'm bringing that back. We'll move on to item 9C, First Amendment to Employment Contract with City Manager Yvonne Kimball, and I will turn it over to the city attorney.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. This agenda item is to provide for an amendment to the city manager's contract. On August 14th, 2023, City Manager Kimball started her employment as the new city manager, effective through an employment agreement. That employment agreement provided that at six months, there would be a performance review. That performance review was conducted on March 12th and March 26th in closed session. Pursuant to the employment agreement, council in its discretion may consider increasing the city manager's salary from step four to step five. And this contract amendment provides for that increase if council should so choose to increase from step four to step five. Also, wanted to point out that effective 2018, we do have a government code that provides that the city council prior to taking final action on the salary of a local government official, i.e. local agency executive, is to report orally during the open meeting in which the final action is to be taken, a summary of a recommendation for a final action. And so pursuant to that, I would ask that the mayor confirm on the record what the city manager's new annual salary would be if this step increase were to be done.
Thank you, Mr. Newmeyer. And that step increase to level five within the contract window would be $222,911. And with that, I will look to council for questions. To my right, any questions? To my left, any questions? With that, I will open public comment on this item.
Evening, Madam Mayor, council staff. Terry Simons had a couple of items. Since the council's review was done in closed session, I would assume that after that closed session, there would have been something to report. I don't remember the attorney reporting out of closed session that you had moved in the affirmative to follow the contract. Secondly, I've spent a lifetime reviewing contracts, being in the contracting business. I've never looked at an amendment to a contract when I didn't have the ability to have the contract itself. I talked to city clerk tonight. She says that is available online. I wasn't able to find it. It would have been nice if, at the very least, there'd been a reference in the staff report as to where to find the entirety of the contract. But I certainly applaud the efforts of our current city manager, and wish her well and continued service to the city. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, is there anyone in the queue?
Mayor, there are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. I do believe Mr. Simons, all city contracts are on the website, is that correct?
Not all.
Not all, oh.
I'll double check on that one, but...
Thank you. Thank you. So our apologies if you weren't able to find it. Comments? Questions to my right? Comments? Questions to my left?
Madam Mayor, did you want me to respond to Mr. Simons' comment on closed session?
Sure, of course.
Yeah, there was nothing to report out, because the final action's being taken at tonight's meeting. If there was some final action taken in closed session, then, of course, it would be reported out. And also, in regards to having contracts available, you know, it's been the city's custom and practice for simple amendments, where we don't actually have the full contract actually attached to the staff report. They should be available on the website. If the city wants to change its custom and practice, then we could start doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Newmeyer. Appreciate that. With that, I will move approval of 9C and ask for a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Motion carries for one. And moving on to item 9D, Discussion and Council Advisory Board Subcommittee. And this will be turned over, this was an item brought by Councilmember Edwards, and I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and council. And this was requested by Councilmember Edwards, and we are discussing it today. City, Councilmember Edwards requested to review the subcommittee, City Council Subcommittee and Advisory Committee, Advisory Committee Subcommittee. We, staff conducted a review and put the list of the subcommittee... We staff conducted a review and put the list of the Subcommittee, Subcommittee's on today's agenda for, for council to consider. While we reviewing these committees, a couple of things came to mind. One was that these committees were, were appointed each year at, usually at January's meeting. And then perhaps staff, staff recommend that before that consideration, perhaps City Council can discuss the Subcommittee appointment to determine the purpose and duration at that time. And also, we felt that those Subcommittee, the Subcommittee could, we, we felt that we could add a item at the City Council meeting agenda just so that, for Subcommittee report, so that we can remind Committee members or staff members to, to, to give a, or a report on, on the latest update. That's pretty much, that's our, quickly, that's our recommendation. And I'm going to turn it over to council member Edwards, and she will have some other, I'm sure she will have other details that she wanted to, us to go over.
Thank you, Ms. Kimball. I, I think I want to just begin by what got me to the point of wanting to raise the conversation on Subcommittee's. And I believe that in the experience that I've had over this year and a half, there has been a need of clarity on behalf of not only council, but I think staff, advisory boards and committees and any Subcommittee's that have been formed underneath them or as directed by council. And so I just wanted to have this conversation to make sure that we all have an understanding, a clear understanding of the process and how these are formed, why they are formed in terms of scope of work and the duration that they exist. Because I also, you know, in looking back in, in my experience, when you stick something on a consent agenda as an item, oftentimes, you know, status quo kind of happens, comes into play. And when you're a new council and you've just come in, there is currently no orientation that involves taking a look at the current Subcommittee's or Committees. So I just felt that this was an opportunity for us to possibly get to some other discussion or maybe a step two of the conversation tonight that might look at further what would that onboarding or orientation look like when it comes to especially new council, since we have an election coming up here and new council starting in January. The current policy 3.13 of council Subcommittee's and council policy is pretty brief. Essentially, I can say that, that Subcommittee's are formed when there's an additional work or research to be done on behalf of another committee. There must be less than a quorum, meaning two members, a limited purpose and time. There should be a reporting back to full council before any formal action can be taken on a pertinent issue. The purpose and parameters and duration should be defined, and the city clerk must keep a list of them and define description as record with the council liaison assignments. And there are just little bits and pieces also that could be added, but I just wanted to read that part specifically. You know, as, as we, as I spoke to that status quo idea and you move these lists along, sometimes, you know, especially new council, we don't know what the scope of work was, where, where that committee began, where are they at now, and, and whether or not that particular Subcommittee even needs to still exist. And so I just really wanted to have that conversation tonight. Maybe I should probably start, start there. And perhaps this could be something where there just needs to be a little bit amendment of policy language. I'm not sure, but just want to start off the conversation.
No, I'll start with you. That's okay. Any questions?
Sure. Well, when this item got brought up, it, it kind of jogged my memory as to when I first was appointed to council and I found myself, you know, on our, our, our late former council member Red Davis's, all of the, all of Subcommittee's and everything that he said on, and I kind of just absorbed that. And, and I remember I did have an orientation. However, it was like every government, or every department, you know, just kind of giving me like a heads up on what each department does, and, and that was really helpful. But when it came to like the task force that I was put on and these types of things, I was kind of lost and kind of just found myself in meetings and going, I don't know why I'm here, but I'm here, you know, I'm excited to learn. And it was, it was a huge learning curve. But what I find interesting, and I'm not sure how it morphed into it, and I, maybe it was a natural progression, I had to look up the name of the task force that I was originally put on, and it was the BoM, the Bureau of Energy, Ocean Energy Management, their intergovernment, or sorry, intergovernmental renewable energy task force. And, and that was back in 2021. And then, then eventually I was appointed to the wind, or sorry, the offshore wind Subcommittee. And so I think somewhere in there, I think maybe it was a natural progression where it went from being like, you know, when two people are paired on a topic, now you're linked thanks to Brown Act, we can't talk to anybody else. And so now it's like if you're going to go and meet with people regarding a certain, I, you know, a certain thing like offshore wind, now you're linked with that person. So it's a natural fit that you would be together on that Subcommittee. So I think that it's really good that we do visit, like, how do these Subcommittee's get formed? What is the scope of work that these Subcommittee's have? I do appreciate the, you know, the reports that we get back because I do feel as though the deep dives that these Subcommittee's get are so important. And I, you know, I love to get those reports because it's like, I feel like I was in the room with you guys when you were getting that information. So I, I, I see where you were coming from, council member Edwards, and you're just kind of like, let's have a overall overview of what these Subcommittee's are and how they come about, and, and how do we make it better and easier for future council members and anybody else who's involved in, let's say, an ad hoc committee or a Subcommittee, understanding what their role is in that. And so that's just kind of my background and how I know that, I know that everybody, all of our staff does such a great job in trying to prepare us and help us and be at our beck and call when we have questions about what it is that we're doing. And, but I do think that there is a, there could be a, a way on that onboarding to, to make it clear for new council members or mayors to really truly understand what those roles are before they're appointed or elected or however they get put on those, into those roles, so.
Councilmember Barton, questions? Mayor Pro Tem? Yeah, I, I have a couple of questions actually for the city attorney. Just for clarity, clarification, you talk a little bit about how the, you know, the appointments, council member Edwards, you know, I agree with the onboarding, I think for any of the Committees liaisons, whether it's a county rep or whatever, it's nice to have some information, and some we get more than others. And especially, I, I think that I would like to think we've educated ourselves to a great level by the time we take these seats, but there's still things evolving. And the same with our advisory board. So I think it's more of a structure and, and, and part of that. But Mr. Newmeyer, if you could talk about the, the way that, like with the Planning Commission and the Harbor Advisory Board and CFAC, you know, some of those Subcommittee's, you know, are, are they pointed through the council at the direction of the council? Are they pointed on their own? You know, the council sets goals, and then we want those advisory boards to work on some of those goals along with our staff. But then if those advisory bodies start Subcommittee's or other things, is that going to undermine the staff time for council direction, council goal? So help me out there.
Sure. So two points on there. The policy right now, as it's currently written, states that staff should be consulted before considering, this is for advisory boards, the creation of a Subcommittee to determine the impact on staff time. So that is in the policy. In regards to whether or not an advisory board is going to create a Subcommittee, advisory boards serve at the direction of the city council. So I think right now, the policy doesn't expressly state whether or not the advisory boards need the approval, initiation, confirmation from the council, whether they do this or not. So that's kind of a gray area. So you might consider amending the policy to establish what procedure advisory boards follow when they want to create a Subcommittee. Options could include the advisory boards are entrusted with fulfilling the goals and purposes of their boards, and they create them at their own discretion. The policy could be they need to put it on a council agenda to have the council approve the creation of it. The policy could be they need to consult with the director to see whether or not the director believes this is going to be significant undertaking and use of city resources and time, and therefore the director determines whether it goes to council. But right now, this isn't in the policy. So that would be something for council to consider.
Thank you. And, and I think just for clarity for the advisory boards as well as for ourselves and the directors, and I don't know what that looks like, I applaud the efforts that, that they take to create some of the advisory boards, and I don't think we're looking to micromanage some of those opportunities. We want to encourage them. But then the flip side to that is that the council, along with the community, goes to great levels to create goals. And when we have goals, staff only has so much limited time. So I worry that as more things get added, if the directors don't have the ability to, like you said, you know, should the director approve it, knowing what their staff capabilities are, knowing, you know, how does this fit with the city goals? I guess I'm trying to find a way to make sure that they integrate and balance because otherwise we're just tasking our directors and the, and the city teams with so much. So that's, that's, thank you for giving some cl-. And then one other question on that would be the difference of the time duration, the purpose, and, and for the advisory board versus an ad hoc committee versus a Subcommittee?
Sure. So these terms get thrown around a lot, but technically under the government code, all of these Subcommittee's are ad hoc. Because if it's a permanent standing Subcommittee, then you're effectively creating something like a HAB or a CFAC, right? So, you know, these terms, like I say, you know, in common usage are thrown around, but these Subcommittee's, the five that the council has, and then the ones that the advisory boards create from time to time, those by definition are ad hoc Subcommittee's because they have a limited duration and they have a specific scope, and they're not standing Committees. Like I said, the equivalent of a standing Committee would be the Harbor Advisory Board, which, you know, has a standing mission, and it does not have an end time.
Thank you for that. And I do know, you know, one of the comments or one of the questions, comments you made was about when do Committees go away? And I know that in the, the last 18 months that I've been here, you know, from the beginning to now, there have been some that have dropped off, like the Coast Guard was on there before. Some of them are added as like the offshore wind slash was BoM originally because they were handling it, but transitioned into offshore wind. The WRF will go away when the last two items are done, then it, it won't have a purpose anymore. Would that be correct to assume that once the IPR and the decommissioning of the power plant, or the wastewater treatment plant are done, that Committee would be completing its task unless you added something else?
That would be at the discretion of the council.
Right. But I'm just looking for how a lifespan looks on something, so.
For something like the WRF Subcommittee, I think it's reasonable to assume that clearly it's been tasked with looking at the conveyance system and looking at the building of the plant. Those are the first two of the three steps. And then the third step is IPR. I would assume that the duration of it would conclude when IPR is done. If council wants to reconsider the scope and the duration, it's certainly a council's pleasure to do that as well.
I would throw in the decommissioning.
Okay, sure. And the, yeah. I, I agree, Mayor, yes. And the decommissioning of the old plant.
You know, and, and I know there was, when we made some changes, council member Ford went to the Chevron Committee, which hasn't really done anything, but it's going to because you're hearing, you're hearing all the movement of what, you know, is going to be with the, the preserve and all those things. So, you know, do you do away with it and start it back up, or do you just kind of leave a place card holder there so you're ready? And, and, you know, are we not being included in information? Is there any information, you know? So I, you know, I don't know. But yeah, so it's, it's interesting.
Going back to something that you mentioned, you know, the changing from the task force to offshore wind and doing these types of things, is there a point in time where the, you know, when it goes from like the task force to going to just in general offshore wind? I mean, what's been done is done, but in the future, if something like that were to happen, would, would it have been best to come back to council? I guess this question is for you, Chris, I mean, city attorney, Newmeyer. To come back to council to, to review the, the new scope of work or to broaden the scope of work, or because it's related, we just morph into that new Subcommittee?
That would be at the discretion of council on how they want to do this. If you look at the staff report, you know, we have some details for the Downtown Design District, which was a recently created Subcommittee. And if council wanted to specify in writing the scope of the other one, two, three, four Subcommittee's, that council could do that. I mean, there's been an understanding of what these Committees are doing to date. So this is entirely council policy. It's a council decision.
With that, I'll open public comment on this item.
For the last time this evening, Betty Winholz. From the perspective of a former city council member and as a member of Committee currently, the Rec and Park Commission, I, I don't want my Sub, my Standing Committees to be rubber-stamping me. I want them to create new ideas. I want them to come with me if there's an idea that's coming from council. They on their own will generate, say, oh, look, we need to be doing this, and then they'll send it on to you. So even though what's in the handbook is fairly short, it's very specific, and I think it kind of serves the purpose. What I think I was hearing was that there really needs to be an orientation that needs to happen, not a change in policy, and that, that what we're doing is, is working. And so I would hope that you would just look at that orientation rather than changing policy with what's going on with your Subcommittee's.
As Betty says, last time this evening, I, I read the description of the Downtown Design District, and because I go to both the Planning Commission and the council meetings, there, whether you know it or not, there's a Subcommittee in the Planning Commission also associated with the Downtown Design District. Now, there's six main meetings, but I don't understand how those occur. Do the two members just go out for coffee, talk about things? Are there reports generated? Is the public invited to meet with those Subcommittee members individually or collectively? I, I like the idea of the openness of a Subcommittee because we get away from all the Brown Act restrictions, and we get away from that thing indicating the three-minute clock. And so I, I really would like to be able to give input to the Subcommittee members, and particularly in the Downtown Design District. If in fact there are two independent operating Downtown Design District Subcommittee's, one from Planning Commission and one from this council, I think they at least ought to be talking. And yet I don't hear, I don't see that, and I don't hear that in any of the, the stuff. So what's going on? And give the public a little more of an idea. There are two public meetings. It doesn't say who's going to host them. Will they be under Brown Act rules, or will they be under Subcommittee rules, whatever those are? I think we need more information about how these Subcommittee's are supposed to interface with the public. Because while I recognize that the Subcommittee- Because while I recognize that the subcommittees are for the benefit of the council, they're also for the benefit of the public, and I think we have a right and an obligation to be able to talk to those subcommittee members and to give input. Again, it's less formal, it's a much cleaner way to, right now, we have actually some subcommittees of one with the open meetings that are two, two of our council members are holding periodically. I would call that a subcommittee of one, so, and those are very useful. I would like to see that I could go to a, one of these six main meetings and be able to talk to the two subcommittee members and throw around some ideas, because I think it's unfair to ask two people to come up with all the ideas. So how are they getting their ideas and having their discussions? And is there a staff component? Is staff affiliated at these meetings? How does it all work? Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Good evening, staff, I mean, council. Lynda Donnelly, Moro Bay. So just so, in case you all don't know, in the not-too-distant past, council members did not sit on or observe these committees. I used to serve on the Recreation and Parks Commission. Each one of these committees has a staff member that leads them, you know? The Harbor Advisory Board, you know, for instance, has our gentleman McCray, no, you got, you. I don't know, it's, I'm, no, Harbor Director, I don't know, sorry, don't know your name, yeah. So this started, I think, with maybe the Irons Council. So I think information from those committees should be reported by the staff members. This would free you folks up from having to go to two meetings or more a month. You're already extremely busy, so that's something to consider here. As for the committees formed in the past, I will speak to the Wolf CAC. They were supposed to serve the entire time the WRF was being built. They were told that from the beginning. It was either by Mr. Livick, or it was by Jamie Irons, not sure, can't remember. Professionals sat on that committee in their own rights, from Archaeological, from Caltrans to my husband, as a civil engineer, there were several civil engineers on there, actually. And I think they asked too many important questions, actually, frankly, because they were suddenly disbanded and given no notice after being celebrated and given thank you service notes, certificates. They were tasked with finding a contractor to oversee the project as it was being built. And the subcommittee of the Wolf CAC actually came up with John, I believe his first name is John, Hollenbeck. The city manager, however, when he presented that to the council for their approval, did not even mention Mr. Hollenbeck, but mentioned the Corolo that we ended up with. So I just, in saying all that, I want to thank Dana Swanson for actually sending out the notices to let these people know that they were no longer needed, even though they had been told that the whole time that the Wolf CAC was going to be, that Wolf was going to be built, that they would, their services were going to be required the entire time. Yeah, that's it, thank you. But I would consider just removing yourselves from these committees, frankly.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, is there anyone in the queue?
Hi, Mayor Wickson, there are no raised hands to the queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Terry, just for your information, the two council members sitting up here are on the committee with the two planning commissioners, and there are also members of the public on that committee. So I'm not sure if you weren't at that meeting when we did that, but that was a while ago, so that's who your representatives are for downtown design district.
Are their meetings open, or how do they meet? When?
You could probably talk to the planning director, and he could give you information on that, or these two liaisons here. Councilmember Edwards, I'll turn it back over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think, I really appreciate the public input here, because it does kind of speak to some of the questions that I've been having, and that is, what exactly is the role of a council member on a subcommittee? What's the role of a staff member on a subcommittee? What is the role of having an advisory board member on a subcommittee? I think that it would be great to have some clarity on that. And then, what about the reporting? You know, councilmember Landrum and myself have taken it upon ourselves to do the report, oftentimes for the design, downtown design district, but I'm wondering if that wouldn't be something that the staff, the assigned staff, in our case, Michael Caudren of the Community Development, if it would be a separate report coming from him, from staff, at some point in the agenda of a council meeting, as opposed to from the council member? And then my, and thank you, because the downtown design district committee is kind of part of the impetus of my questioning as well, because in essence, councilmember Landrum and myself, our goal is to be able, after all the meetings that have been had, that we've attended with this committee, and all these members' discussion, and is for us to somehow come to some sort of recommendation to bring back to full council. And so if that is indeed our role moving forward on committees, subcommittees of this nature, then it would seem to me that we would take more of a listening role on that subcommittee, and i.e. have a report done by staff. So maybe we want to jot that out in a minute.
So that, that committee is different than the standing committees, like the best that we're on, because those are long-term. And I would share that one of the recommendations I saw tonight from city manager Kimball was to include a line item moving forward that would include those updates from those committee reports. But I know for, for myself, as far as the offshore wind, we've always asked, you know, Harbor Directors phone to bring updates, so that all council and the community has that access to the same information as we get it. We've really been diligent about doing that and posting it on the website because of the Brown Act requirements. We can't call you up or call, or chat with you about something, so, you know, I think he's done a good job with that, the same as when there's been some activity, which Vistra's been a real challenge, because it's, you know, you and I know, they don't share a whole lot. And yet, you know, in the past, you know, we had Scott Graham try and provide information as well as the city attorney. So I think we can probably do a better job, and I like the idea of doing the line item so that it keeps that awareness and holds us to task more with reporting. And I like the idea of doing a better job with the onboarding, as we have new advisory board members and people step up, so that there's a better understanding, and I think that'll give them more confidence in their role, too.
Do you think, Mayor, and Councilmember Edwards, and everyone else, do you feel as though, if we're making the recommendation to improve the onboarding process, how can we, as council members, aid in that process, instead of just having staff like guess, like what is it that you didn't get, or didn't, weren't aware of, or what could, what could be done better in the future? So I'm just curious how we could be proactive in assisting with that, since we all seem to kind of agree that that onboarding could address this and some other things. So I just want to put that out there, like, how can we, how can we help? And I don't know what that looks like, but.
Questions?
I'm just, to follow up with what you're talking about, councilmember board, I guess I'm thinking of when I, of the, so I'm on some boards throughout the county, and some of them have had orientations, and some of them haven't. And I can't honestly say that, I mean, it's helpful, it has been somewhat helpful to have the orientation, but then it's still like a learning curve anyways to get, you know, up to, it's kind of like your own due diligence to figure it all out. And so I don't know, like, you know, I'm, I understand the orientation, that's a great idea, but then again, how do you do that?
I have to say that city attorney Newmeyer did a kind of a how to, how to run a, or how to, how to run a meeting, or I don't remember what it was titled, but it was basically Robert's Rule of Order, and then the Brown Act, and kind of going over everything with advisory board members.
Yes, that was a few years ago, at the request of the city. I provided an overview that went above and beyond the ethics training, AB 1234, that's done every other year, where I talked about Robert's Rules of Order, Brown Act, how to follow proper procedures for advisory boards. So I could do that again if requested.
I think it was really, really helpful. I saw a lot of light bulbs turned on in the, in your audience, a lot of advisory board members that, you know, I mean, they sign up for something and kind of may have never been on a board before, and that sometimes happens with council members. And so I think that, you know, we go through like ethics training, and we go through all these things, and like, oh, and like I had mentioned, I had that amazing, it was all on Zoom, because I got initiated during COVID, so I had a bunch of little rectangles and everybody trying to, you know, help me understand what the department, you know, does, and what they're responsible for, and who to reach out to. But I have to say that the way that that was presented, city attorney, is that it was really, it kind of put some really complicated concepts into like layman's terms, and very understandable for just the average citizen who wants to come and help. And, and so I think something like that, I don't know what that would look like, but I think on the onboarding process, just kind of going through the formation of subcommittees, that, you know, those types of things, in a way that everybody can understand, and it could be open to public, you know, to come and listen, and so that they understand as well, like what we're allowed to do, what we can't do. We did a retreat, which was, which was great, but, you know, and it was open to public, we had a few attendees there when we first had our new members come on. That was kind of a camaraderie thing, but I think something like that, and, you know, in the future could be done, where we're, we're going over kind of the structure of what a council member is, and, and our responsibilities. So just wanted to throw that out there, and say that that was one of my favorite, you know, very informative forums that I've attended, so, anyway.
Can I ask a question? I just wanted to clarify if staff, does there have to be staff involvement with a subcommittee?
No.
Okay, because it sounds like it's a lot of work for staff, and maybe, maybe there could be subcommittees, and I don't know how that works, but maybe there could be subcommittees that don't involve staff time.
Yeah, so, subcommittees are created at the discretion of the council to allow for, you know, two members to meet and to brainstorm, research, review, analyze, et cetera, and then eventually, you know, come back to council with some recommendations. There might be multiple items that they go through, you know, like the WRF subcommittee has been very helpful in meeting with staff to talk about contract amendments and digging into issues and whatnot. You know, a different type of subcommittee is in the past, the city had subcommittees for the cannabis ordinance and for the STR ordinance, and, you know, those had definitely a lot of staff involvement. It just depends on how the council wants to structure it. I mean, at the end of the day, the subcommittee is the council's creation, and the council gets to decide what they do and they don't do, and how much staff is involved, and how much staff isn't involved.
Thank you.
But to that end, then, I would ask again, that you said earlier that the advisory boards don't, they can form their own committees, so they can form their own committee without the department head directing it, or allowing it, or they can just, you know, the Public Works Advisory, two members can just go form their own committee, because, I mean.
So, that's a really good question, in regards to the policy doesn't specifically address what the procedures are there. So, you know, any two members of an advisory board, or any two members of the council can just decide to kibbitz on topics, but if they're tasked by their respective commission board or the council with a specific project, then you have the authority of that group saying, hey, we want you to do A, B, and C. And at that point, staff typically does get involved, because they've been empowered by that group. And so, you know, the current policy, the only limitation on the advisory board creations is that it says staff should be consulted before considering the creation of a subcommittee to determine the impact on staff time. That's pretty broad on what that means in real time. I suppose maybe it'd be useful to talk to the directors on how that's been observed. Council could tighten up the procedures, or leave them the way they are. It's up to council.
Thank you. I like the idea, you know, what was mentioned by an advisory board member, that they have some wiggle room, some freedom to have some creativity, but perhaps, you know, out of this, when, you know, councilmember Edwards and the council's looking at direction, perhaps there can be some feedback we can get from the department heads, that we can find some balance that works for them, but still allows that opportunity for new ideas to roll with some of these boards. I would like to see, as we're doing this discussion, the conversation that, you know, you had earlier, and about the Brown Act and the Robert's Rules of Order, we've talked about that before, and making that maybe once a year, on a Wednesday when you're here the day after, for the new appointments, and anyone else who wants to attend, but just once you're appointed to the advisory boards. And because I think that when we appoint to the advisory boards, there are people that we select that have knowledge in those fields, you know, so there's already some level of understanding, but perhaps they haven't served on an advisory board. So I think those, the Robert's Rules of Orders will help those who are, usually, it's not somebody brand new as the chair, but it'll still help them move into those roles, and the meeting will run more professionally and smoother. So I could see that being something to take away from this, that we do that on a regular basis.
I just, I, thank you, Mayor, for actually bringing up the offshore wind report, because that's actually one where there is a report done by Mr. Chafon and the staff, and we're kind of getting that information as you guys go along, and I feel that that's great. I personally love getting that. And the other part of this, I, my experience that I had with a subcommittee or an ad hoc, I guess in this case would have been pieces of CFAC, pieces of Harbor, a couple members from them, and then, you know, there wasn't, I think, a clear direction from us. I think there was a lack of clarity in this case, and, you know, push come to shove, other conversation happened, and it became something that it wasn't meant to be, for example. And before you know it, you're eating up staff time, just because you simply are confused as to what the purpose is. And so that was another reason that I felt this conversation would be good to have tonight. Having said that, we do have a staff member here who was involved in that, and I would just love for Mr. Chafon to offer his feedback.
Thank you, Councilmember Edwards, and I appreciate that. I do have some thoughts on this, because I've gone through it. But I wanted to tell you a little bit about my experience in a prior city, where it wasn't an orientation that we went through, it was mandatory for every new manager, and anyone who's involved in a committee or a commission, as well as those committee members and commission members, to go through a full day, not a full day, a half-day of training. It was full Browns Act, it was information regarding ad hoc committees, their scope, their time limit. It involved, you know, making certain you don't get into some of the Browns Act issues, like becoming a legislative body when you shouldn't become a legislative body. It also included meeting de quorum, how we're supposed to present and talk to a commission or a committee member. As an example, anytime we addressed the mayor, it was always honorable mayor, so everyone handled it the exact same way. And then it even included. way. And then it, it even included city policy, as, as the city attorney just mentioned. So it was all those details were brought together. It was done with a presentation, it was done with handouts, and so everybody was on the same page. It's a lot of work for our city to do that, but I mean, maybe slowly you can get yourselves to a point where it becomes consistent so that we all know what's expected and the committee and commission members know what's expected. And then we don't go down that path where we have to kind of reel everything back in.
Thank you so much for that feedback. I really appreciate it and talking to you about it earlier. I, I wanted it to be shared with the full council. Thank you so much. So I also think part of this is being able to make sure that the community understands where we are in all this too. So I was thinking kind of just a little bit more expansively on that orientation. So with the election coming up, we're going to be having new council members coming in, you know, maybe part of that, and I'm just kind of throwing these things out there, maybe part of that is something with the city manager and that, that, that kind of orientation to Browns Act and Robert's Rules, but then there's also maybe before we get into goal setting, just that discussion within that half day with regard to, hey, these are the committees, these are the subcommittees that we have right of now, as of now, this is when they started, this is where they are in their scope of work. And then at that point, the council would be, you know, the full council, I think, personally, not just the new members, but I, I would love to see it be the full council because then everybody's on the same page. You know, coming off of campaigning, you're in this like real competitive mode, and I think that this would be a great opportunity to, to kind of draw us in together and have a moment where we're really, you know, understanding what it's going to be like working together and to, to kind of see where we're at with those subcommittees and whether or not going into goal setting, we've determined if some of them still need to be around or if they don't, or scope of work has changed. I think that would be a great opportunity to do it then and then wham, go into goal setting. Just a thought.
I think those sound more like policy items as we go, as far as, you know, direction when we get there at the will of the council. And, and, you know, this council, you know, something that's been important to us the whole time has been about transparency and, and, you know, part of my goal has been for us to reunite those joint meetings that we've started to have and, and work collaboratively. And I think that's been really important, a really important step so that we're connecting. And it's helped to share information, like our meeting with the City Council and Planning Commission, where we were able to talk about offshore wind, we were able to talk about the best project, where all council and all community is getting all the same information. So, you know, I think we can continue those goals of those joint meetings and how they can intersect to keep bringing that public information. The onboarding, you know, I guess, Mr. Newmeyer, are we looking, what are we looking for out of this? Are we looking for motion stunner? Are we looking for direction? What, what, or city manager Kimball, one of you?
Well, the, the staff report, the recommended action was review of existing committee status as related to city policies, concerning formation and scope of existing subcommittees, and then consider clarifying the scope and duration of the subcommittees, formally dissolving expired subcommittees as necessary, provide direction as deemed appropriate. City manager Kimball, I think, could speak to, there's some further recommended recommendations, I think, at the end of the staff report. So, city manager Kimball, would you like to speak to some of the suggestions you have?
Okay, thank, thank you, city attorney. I, I'm jotting down some, some to-do list and maybe I should, I should run this by the city council. One of them was that orientation, the Robert Rules of Order and training that can be handled by the city attorney. And I understand that you, you, you wanted to do this for not so much council, but for advisory, advisory boards, right? Okay. So we probably can, can schedule something soon?
I would think we would do it after our appointments, yearly appointment.
Okay, okay, so that's the annual appointment. And I, I'm also going to throw, you know, on the subject, I believe the CGPIA provide a, a free training, correct?
Yes.
Free training to, right? I'm looking at city clerk because she's very familiar with that.
AB 1234, I think, yeah, AB 1234, the FPPC used to provide training on that, and it's been kind of back and forth, or the state's going to keep doing it.
Well, CGPIA, I know when I attended those workshops, provided that training, but I think, you know, that was also something you provided when you did that.
Yes.
You did the Brown Act, so everybody, or the training requirements that we have. And I think that allows council to participate since we're required to renew our, our certifications every other year. So, so new council members as well as returning council members that hit that two-year threshold. So if we do it after the appointments, the first of the year, in, you know, February, March, everybody should be able to be compliant and, and get any new changes that are done, because obviously, I know I need those.
Yeah, traditionally, yeah, traditionally, myself and the assistant city attorney have provided AB 1234 training.
Right.
In January or February after the election. And then that's two-hour training, it covers four areas that the state mandates. In addition to that, as council member Ford mentioned in the past, I provided a separate training.
Right.
That was a public meeting, you know, I don't really think any members of the public showed up, but they were welcome to, but there were a lot of advisory board members there. And it was a very engaging session, a lot of good questions about Robert's Rules, Brown Act, you know, how procedures should be followed, akin to what Director Shafon was talking about, kind of a, a mini version, I think, of what he experienced at his prior city.
Yeah, and I, I know some of these things have been optional as far as participation when we talked about the.
Yes.
Robert's Rules of Order and those things, but I think if we incorporate it with all the other things that are required and do one fell swoop, we can kind of put that into maybe the advisory guidelines or whatever, when you come onboard, you know, as part of the process, that you will be required to, whether it's via Zoom or in person, we can do it virtual for those who, you know, have restrictions on being able to be there. But I think that that would be a reasonable thing to, to ask of them.
Sure. And, and to be clear, the AB 1234 training, the focus is more on ethics and political conflicts of interest and whatnot. So the Robert's Rules of Order in there is is kind of secondary.
Right.
And so if that was a separate training course, then there would certainly be more substance to it.
Add it to it. So I see the onboarding as a, as an opportunity then, as one of the goals we would want added. And then I think that the idea of including the.
Subcommittee report.
The subcommittee reports on the agenda, whether we have something to report out or not, maybe, but at least if we have a place card holder, it'll kind of hold us to task and maybe encourage us. We all attend the meetings and you get so busy with all the other things, sometimes we forget to share something that's relevant, that, that we want the council and the community to know from HSOC or IWMA, some change in rules or something. So it'll help us maybe as a reminder.
So Mayor, my question would be though, are you seeing the council members who are on those delivering the report, or would it be the staff who's doing that? Because...
Well, I would want the staff to do the ones that are for the best and the WORF and those things, but I think it holds us to the ones that we serve on, you know, like you do REACH and, and Jen does the five, first at five, and Laurel does IWMA, you know, we don't always report those out.
Right.
And so this will hold us maybe to that level of doing that also. But I would hope that, I mean, I, I think it's best for it to come from our department heads because, especially unless I'm wrong, because of Brown Act things and stuff like that, coming from them, the information is more at staff level.
Can I just say that even though that Mr. Shafon and also Mr. Qualick for the two subcommittees that I'm on, we, I also report out my take on it too. So I feel like.
It doesn't need to be limited.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be limited.
It need to be limited.
So then, are you thinking that it would be, we have the place card holder, the staff would do the report, like the general?
Yeah.
And then maybe we would chime in at that point too? I, I love that, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Okay. So, thank you, Mayor. And then that, we can, we can start doing that next meeting? Okay, thank you.
Is there anything else out of this, Cindy? Excuse me, Councilmember Edwards? Or any of the other council members up here?
I just want to, just, so here it says additionally is recommended to include a subcommittee report in city council. Oh, wait, I'm reading the wrong one. It is reminded that the advisory board should consult staff before considering the creation of a subcommittee to determine the impact on staff time. So that's just a remind, that's a recommendation, it sounds like to me.
Well, that, because that was stated in, in the policy book, the handbook, that's basically from their, under advisory board subcommittees, that paragraph, the last sentence is staff should be consulted before considering the creation of subcommittee to determine impact of staff time. But I wasn't, I actually was not quite clear what city council wanted us to, to do on, on this one. I, I heard some discussion about whether city council should change the policy so that when, whenever advisory board want to create a subcommittee, they needed to talk to city council? Or you, do you want us to?
I'm, I'm thinking of the Harbor Advisory Board, and it seems like they have, don't they do a lot of their own thing?
I think that was the former way of doing things. They kind of went off and created their own subcommittees and standing committees, and we kind of pulled that back a little bit for now, mainly because there's so much staff time involved every time a new committee gets established. But when I had joined the city and in my first few meetings, they, they had four, I think it was four standing committees that had been going on for years. And, and we eliminated those because those were Browns Act committees, and they really shouldn't have been, been going on, but.
But I mean, they could do some kind of work that didn't involve a lot of staff time and just, that, that is a, a, an allowed thing currently. But you.
Yeah.
But the recommendation is to run it by staff first.
It is what is currently stated in the policy.
Okay.
So the existing policy is that it's conferred on staff, and, and I guess I would just want us as a council and maybe the city manager to really reinforce their position for, for that, to feel comfortable and confident, you know, working collaboratively with their advisory boards, but, you know, also knowing that you can say staff doesn't have that capacity. And at the time, I just don't want someone to feel like, if, if you recognize, you know, and I'll just use you, Director Shafon, I won't pick on Michael tonight, you know, just because like you said, you have to sometimes reel it in a little bit because it was ongoing or didn't end. And, and I know from watching the advisory board meetings at home, as well as being the liaison for Planning Commission, you know, I have seen where Mr. Graham said, you know, well, we have all these other things right now, it's, it's not going to fit, or, yeah, we can bring that back, where there's been some, some added things where Cal Poly or somebody's coming, but that takes staff time, it all takes staff time, so.
So Mayor, if I can make a suggestion for the discussion here, my understanding and Director Codron, I don't think has experienced this, I mean, he's been here a few months, but when these different advisory bodies, like you just mentioned, are considering the creation of a subcommittee, I think it's often at the will of the advisory board to just put it on their agenda and, you know, they vote on it and, you know, they, they create them. And, you know, that's fine if that's what council wants the policy to be, but right now, I don't think that there is any clear direction from council that before that happens, before it goes on an advisory board agenda, you know, the chair or whoever, you know, wants to do this, has to talk to the director. Now, you know, I'm not giving an opinion on what you should or shouldn't do, but I think that's the current situation right now. So, you know, if you look at the list here, there's, you know, four Planning Commission subcommittees, and then there's two Harbor Advisory Board subcommittees. The process that, how those got created, I'm not sure if there was a deep dive on how much staff time would be involved. And now that these subcommittees are actually off and running, I assume staff is being asked to work with them. And of course, if that's more efficient and that gets work done, great, you know, but, but I think that's something to consider on how these are being formed historically. And I don't, I don't know if this policy is really being thoroughly, thoroughly complied with, where, you know, the directors are asked, hey, you know, should we form the subcommittee because it's going to take 10 hours, 100 hours, whatever. So something to consider.
Yes, my question is, do the directors feel empowered enough to take that position? And, and, you know, I mean, I, I would, I'll ask Mr. Calderon, you know, if the, I know you've only been there for a few months, but, you know, I mean, are you comfortable if the Planning Commission is wanting to bring something? And I would just, and I'm not picking on them, sorry, but, you know, they have four subcommittees and they want to bring some, and we have something that we actually approved at council to send to them that has yet to be there. So in the meantime, we've given a council direction to send something over, but they have four subcommittees already. We, that would be adding one more, well, not a subcommittee necessarily, but one more item. So I don't know if there's something you could share from your experiences and other.
Sure. Yeah, thank you.
Jurisdictions.
You know, I've had the opportunity to attend three Planning Commission meetings, but also some subcommittee meetings as well, whether it be the downtown design district or project subcommittee. So the Planning Commission oftentimes will convene or appoint members to serve on a project subcommittee, where we'll work with the applicant and staff and the committee members to discuss issues that couldn't be resolved during a public hearing. And so, you know, those are challenging, they do take time from staff, it's hard to schedule those things at a time when all, everybody can, can get together. And so it ends up really delaying action on development applications that are submitted to the city and ready for, for action. And so I have had the opportunity to speak with Chairman Roshan about this, and we both agree that that's, it's not ideal to have those subcommittees, that, you know, both, there's work on the part of city staff that can help prevent that from happening and, you know, work on the part of the Planning Commission. And so I think it was a good conversation about, you know, what the policy says. So we, we had this conversation in the, you know, ahead of tonight's meeting, knowing that this discussion was going to happen, and just both agree that, like, if there's a question about creating a subcommittee, that the chairperson will ask the director, you know, for feedback about that. And maybe the decision doesn't get made in the moment, but there's more time to reflect about what the scope of the subcommittee meeting is. So I think that process would really benefit if at the time the subcommittee is created, you know, the details that we spoke about tonight in terms of the duration, the purpose, all those things are specified. So I think that the, the policy as it is, well, not speaking of the policy it is, your question was, does, does the director, do I feel empowered to input, to engage with the Planning Commission on that question? And the answer is yes, and the chairperson has been very open to those conversations and very considerate of staff time.
Thank you. And I, I would have asked the same question of Mr. Qualick, not trying to, to, you know, pigeonhole anybody. I think that's what I guess I, I'm looking for, is to know that there's a mutual, shared dialogue. And, and I think what I'm hearing you say maybe is that as those suggestions come up, that you, you don't necessarily have to say, yeah, form that committee tonight, how about we meet and get back to you, and what would that look like, rather than jumping in. And I think that may be some of the demise sometimes is jumping into it ahead of time. So, but thank you for that feedback.
Yeah, Mayor, the only thing that I would want to know is, is whether or not the council would be supportive of, during the onboarding, since we've talked about it, the idea of reviewing these subcommittees, where they started. these subcommittees, where they started, whatever information we have, their scope of work, where they're at right now, at least, in their scope of work, so that everybody who is at that orientation meeting, new council members and all of us, I would think, are on the same page and ready to get into our goal session, to make sure that the subcommittees that we have at that point kind of align with where the new council is going in that.
Yeah, I think that's going to be something that's going to come up at the time, and we can give direction right now, but. Sorry, I don't have my microphone. I think, you know, I think it's fine for council to give direction towards that, but I think that that'll be a council decision at that time with whomever the five people are sitting here, whether it's the five of us again or someone else. Never know, right? No, I was just being sarcastic. So, yeah, I think it would be a council direction at the time. I understand what you're saying. I think it makes, it makes sense to address all those things before setting goals, but.
Yeah, it was the part that I felt in our onboarding that was missing. And then when we got to that goal-setting, I felt like it would have been nice to know that we already had these kind of groups ready to go on whatever goal we were looking to achieve, so.
So I think we've got two items, then, that is, one is the onboarding with new advisory board members, and two is bringing the items on the agenda twice a month. I still don't know if we have clarification on direction for how those committees are formed at the advisory board level. So I guess I'm looking for clarity still on what the goal is out of that, that you wanted, or if someone has a suggestion, or if we want to leave it as-is for now, and we can address it again later if there's something that.
I'm for leaving it as-is right now and addressing it if we have an issue later.
If something comes up.
Yeah, if something comes up.
Allowing the directors to continue to work with the advisory boards, yeah, based on the comments. Is that amenable to everyone?
I think it is. And I think it's important as we get new hires coming in, because right now we have, you know, interns. And I think making sure, I don't know if that would be the city manager's job, or when we get the new directors to come in, to make sure that they're aware, you know, that we
Yes.
of this conversation.
Right, thank you. Yeah, I would make a mental note, because when I started, I did not realize there was the policy book. And then something happened, and then I was introduced to it. And then it was, and then I goes, oh, right, there's the answer. And you really need somebody to point that. And thank you for reminding me to plug that in, you know, that a
So perfect, we have direction there. We don't need
Yes, we do. I just, a city attorney introduced the first one, we didn't get to that. I just want to make sure that we, city council members, Edwards and the rest of city council are okay with that, like, the reviewing the purpose and duration of the existing, existing committee. Are we good? We can wait until January when it come up?
I think that's what we talked about with next, yeah, with the new council. I don't think we would change anything mid-year.
Sorry, I probably should clarify. I wasn't trying to suggest changes. I was just more review a scope of work.
Right.
So I was wondering if we would want to do that prior, or excuse me, during that onboarding, so that they would understand where it was at before, you know, you were assigning, not you personally, but us or?
Me, part, in part, yeah, because the mayor has a discretion on some of those. So, yeah. But, yeah, so that people understand what committees entail, what the meetings are, what the scope is, just how many meetings a month, how many times you have to go, you know. One, one group will meet once every three months, and another group will meet twice a month. You never know what the commitments are, level of commitments are. So, yeah. Yeah, thank you. I think probably during the onboarding, that would be a good time. Yeah, and that would set it before goals.
Yeah.
So it kind of all sinks in, so.
Did that make sense? Sorry.
I just had a question to make sure I get the next agenda right. Is this additional reporting item specific to subcommittee work, or is it the discretionary appointments to county boards and subcommittees?
I think it was
I heard both.
I thought it was specific to, I, council member, or excuse me, City Manager Kimball, did you, how did you have that listed? Was that specific to the subcommittees?
Yes, I have a subcommittee.
Specific to the subcommittees?
And then the other section that we've traditionally done is city council reports. That would be where the discretionary appointment items come up.
Right, that we already do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you. Any future agenda items?
I have one. I don't know if it would be possible to get some kind of a report on or clarification of what it means to be a bird sanctuary? Because we're, no, I mean, it's said that we're a bird sanctuary, but there's, I'm not clear on what that definitely
So do we want to see about inviting the Audubon Society to do a presentation for us?
I don't know. Aren't we deemed a bird sanctuary? I don't know. Isn't that on signage?
Public Works, I think, handles that, don't they?
Are we a bird sanctuary?
It's on signage in Mar-a-Bay, and I'm just wondering what that means. I mean, there's been people that have been questioning that, and so I'm wondering what it means.
I don't know if you all can hear me. This is Greg.
Oh, hi.
Hey, how's everyone doing?
You've been there all that time? I would have asked you the questions.
Yeah, so, well, just on the bird sanctuary, I don't have the code section on hand. I just ran into this code section the other day, and the municipal code actually mentions placing these signs in the city. So I could certainly get information about that and report it back to the city council at the next meeting, maybe just as a quick item, if that's what the city manager desires, or in some other manner, maybe we could put it in the newsletter.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, we've had questions regarding the tree trimming and birds, and also the turkeys in the street getting sprayed. So, and people have wanted to know what, like, aren't we a bird sanctuary? What does that mean? So I didn't, I don't know what to say, other than I do see signs that say we're a bird sanctuary. But maybe, maybe they're just signs. I mean, what, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Qualick. That would be great. Appreciate that. Anything else, council? Would that were adjourned? Thank you.